States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, one and all.
Good morning.
All right. Did you fellers have a chance to look at the agenda? What do you think?
Did, I would have to accept it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bulls, aye.
Okay, how about the minutes?
I did have a chance to read the minutes. They were emailed out to me.
Yep, that's nice.
I would.
I like that we look it over before then.
I would move that we, uh, accept the minutes.
Second? Call for a vote on that.
Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bulls, aye.
And now for the good ones, the claims.
I did go through the claims. Fifteen pages, something like that.
It was a long run this time. This is the time where we had like almost three weeks. It just happens to fall twice a year we do that.
I looked over, tried to find anything and jumped out at me.
No, I didn't see anything.
Didn't see anything to look at.
Good, Tracy did.
Oh, boy.
What'd you find?
Just questions. Uh, Grace.
Hmm?
Uh, the membership fee for the Colonic Club?
Yes, we have a line for memberships and dues.
Really? Okay.
I think he's, yeah, we just never paid for other entities to join that. I didn't know if it was grant reimbursable or anything for that one?
No.
So, you know, Ron, you join, you pay that your own dues, don't you?
Yeah.
Well, we got one for the share, uh, animal investigation.
Yes, I can speak to that.
Okay.
Um, we had a really bad animal bite over in Garrison. Dogs were not vaccinated and the physician recommended rabies vaccine to the victim because there was no history as well. There was no place to take the dog to, the dog also was injured, probably going to death. So, we made the mutual decision to take it to Alice out at the veterinarian clinic. She put the animal down and then whatever else she did with it, the bills itemized. And she sent the bill to Benton County because of course the people have no money. So, in order for us to keep a relationship with the veterinarian clinic when we have incidents like that, we decided to pay it.
Good. Did they test the dog then?
Yes, and it was negative.
Oh, that's good.
But on the other hand, the victim, her physician wanted her to immediately start that. And I don't know if you guys are aware, but that was five or six thousand dollars. Insurance does not pay though. So, it was a mess all the way around.
'Cause then we're forced to pay that, right?
Pardon me?
We're forced to pay that on that victim too, right?
No, no, we do not have to pay the rabies.
Okay.
But.
So, the victim themselves have to pay that?
They're, they should. They will or have to or whatever arrangements they make with their provider. The thing that is concerning, which I understand, we do have this happen and what have you, but the price, as you can see, is steep. But if you want to maintain some sort of a relationship, we almost had to pay her.
Okay. And then Grace, seems like I'm picking on you.
That's okay.
Just explain.
Yeah.
More pulse promotions?
More Hewitts, yes.
Yeah, what's?
That's for, uh, we have a grant, uh, that we use up at the end of the year, um, that we're able to use, um, the funding for promotional items. Um, and that's the company that produced them.
Okay. Let's see, that's all I got. Yep, that's all I got. Gentlemen, may I make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the claims.
Second? Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bulls, aye.
Okay, now we're gonna do the arco folks, and there's only one of them.
And that invoice is in that folder?
Yes.
So, just initial that one.
Circle it.
Yep. R-C-T.
Redneal stuff. Yes.
Okay. I would move to approve the claim for secondary odes for the arco folks.
Second? All right, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bulls, aye.
Couple initials and signatures. Six thousand. Six thousand, five dollars and fifty-four cents.
Okay.
What I didn't do, it's just initial, initial top. Barb, I'm gonna jump on you. I missed the timeline, I guess.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I'd like to have you approve a farm exemption application for Brian Miller. Uh, he owns well over a hundred some acres in Benton Ten off of Thirty Second Avenue. He wants to put a new house. Uh, he's got plenty of farm ground for corn, soybeans, hay, whatever he decides to do. He meets the qualifications of a farm. You can see on your diagram that we put out, he's got plenty of farm ground.
Is the green star where he wants to put the house in the trees there?
That would, over on Thirty Second Avenue, Bruce, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, it's off of Thirty Second. Yes, that would be correct.
Okay.
Brian owns Colony Plumbing and Heating out of Cedar Rapids. And he's coming to Benton County.
Everything's in order, Barb?
Everything is in order.
I would move to approve that exemption for Brian Miller. Feels like the house is gonna be back from the trees.
If I take any of your farm ground outside, I'd second that.
Okay. Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bulls, aye.
Who's these?
Thank you. Didn't lose a bracelet today, did you, Barb?
No, I didn't. I've got all my stuff, thanks.
That was not Josh Carson.
No, it was not.
Didn't look like his.
It didn't look like it video, did it? That's too funny, guys. But thanks for buying me that. Okay, take care, thanks.
Have a good day.
My thanks.
Thank you.
Number six. Appoint members to the Homer Township.
Give her the echo.
Who did we have?
I don't know, you told me to put that one on.
Yeah.
I don't remember. I don't know if you told me the name. You told me that last week, put that one on.
Yes, uh, uh. Mr. Becker. John Becker, I believe.
Okay. All right. Do you have his address or phone number or anything for us?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, so there's more than one John Becker?
Yeah. He's the one that's got the business, uh, on the road west of Keystone between Keystone and Elbrow. Pioneer Business.
Okay.
But you've talked to him and he knows it?
Yeah. Can't remember. Who's all that?
Homer. Open that spreadsheet.
Dale Seak.
Oh, he gave you his name?
Randy Sherman, John Becker, excuse me. That's who I said, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, John Becker.
I got it wrote down.
Okay.
But I don't have his number yet. Uh, Dale Seak would have that.
Okay. As long as Dale knows, he'll be in the one to get in touch with him.
Yes. It was too late to get it on last week's, but I did. I have it wrote down.
Okay.
So, can we get a motion to appoint John Becker as Homer's trustee? So moved.
Second?
All right, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Aye.
Bulls, aye.
Flood insurance. We got a time item here?
Um, we have public health at nine fifteen.
Well, flood insurance, we can do that real quick, I think.
Yep.
Look at them.
I looked it over. I don't deal a whole lot in flood transport. I looked it over and it's been lined before it has been in the past.
You wanna look at them again, Ron?
I looked at the flood insurance stuff last night. They had sent us a letter, changed, is that the one that changed hands and the values were?
From years ago?
Mm-hmm. Pre-assigned.
From years ago, yeah.
And if the insurance companies fine with it, then, you know, with the, with the values.
I guess the question is, do you want to increase?
Let me take them off.
It seems like I thought they were low.
Well, it was like they would have been reversed almost in values, we thought, but.
You got an option there. You either keep it as it is or increase it. And the crease, you know, I never penciled it up, but it's quite a bit more, of course. I have no idea what they're worth. Just kind of guess in the dark, especially in the courthouse. I have no clue what.
I don't, the insurance company comes up with the value on stuff. So, that's. Then they're only raising it by ten, uh, ten thousand dollars, building from contents, so. That's an extra two hundred dollars. You're in that. The amount of increase versus the amount of premium increase, I think keeping it as is is probably.
Okay.
That your vote here? That's my motion to keep it as is, yep.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Call for a quick quote for this one. Aye.
Tippet, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Yes. Dan, it's Grace.
Hi.
Morning.
Um, we get rid of the top of three, I take it. I.
Yes.
I figured those out. The next line's you.
Mm-hmm.
The next line's the nurse.
Monica, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, stationery informs.
Mm-hmm.
Those top ones under Servicery Zero, that was back when we would do the pass-through with Virginia Gay.
Yep.
And we got that all cleaned up this year, so.
Okay. Uh, do we have a big conference or something we'll go on to this year?
Um, for the mileage and travel expense, so, uh, almost all the increases you see here are just due to spending authority and additional grant funds that we have coming in. Um, I worked with, uh, the Otter's Office, um, this season and, uh, we do do a lot of travel, um, for our FEP grant, which is obviously reimbursable, um, but to be able to, um, you know, if Monica and I are both going for a couple of nights, we have to be able to, uh, you know, purchase those rooms in advance. Uh, and a lot of our trainings are not local to the area. Um, so we're, we're traveling quite a bit, uh, and especially with our audits that we do. Um, we're all over the county between, uh, pretty much September and January.
What's the medical and health services?
The, which one? The ten?
Fifty-five.
Yep, that's our, uh, local public health services grant. That's just the spending authority for that one. Um, yeah.
Got it.
Overall, she went down slightly?
Yep.
Yep. General basic difference is about seventy-eight hundred dollars less and then the supplemental, um, decent savings, about seven sixty.
I have no, no other questions. Tracy, ask the sixty-five one. And your grants are just like, they're, they're a pass-through thing? You just gotta have the spending authority?
Yeah, yeah. So, yep, we have four, four main grants that we work with. Um, one covers our immunization, our immunization program. Uh, second is our local public health services, which covers staff time. Uh, third is our emergency preparedness grant or FEP. Uh, and then last is our six-year response grant, which is another preparedness grant.
Another thing you guys might want to keep track of is the percentage in wages. So, when we go to act on wages, so we know whose we have to tweak or not.
Uh, okay. What did you give yourself?
Uh, myself and Monica, um, we discussed with our Board of Health and it's four percent for myself and Monica.
I think that was the same with Barb's on that portion too, the Health Board does theirs, but just so we kind of know.
Okay. I have local more questions.
Well, I've got questions. What is currently, maybe you don't, maybe you don't, what's currently floating around the area for?
Ooh, um, seeing a lot of, a lot of noro, especially in the schools, uh, and the, the little itty-bitty kiddos, um, seeing some RSV. I've heard from our daycare providers. Um, so, yeah, just a lot of wash your hands and stay home if you're sick.
Which one comes with the rash?
Ooh, hand, foot, mouth. That's, yeah. That one's no fun either for parents or kids.
And then influenza?
Influenza A, I, I know is, that's taken a couple of people out that I, that I know lately. Um, but, yeah, it is kind of nasty out there right now. So, yes, please stay home if you're not feeling well.
Funny, on my bus route, one kid isn't on this date and sister isn't on the next date.
Yep.
And I was like, oh, boy.
Running through the family.
Yeah, they're pulling around.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, we do have our open house today from eight to four, so stop down. Yes, stop down to get your, uh, blood pressure checked. We got hot, hot chocolate coffee bar, so feel free to stop down.
I need some caffeine in there.
Yes.
Blood pressure's always a good thing to check. Eight we can't do.
No, just wait for Derek.
Yep, nines. Sheriff, what about the lady? We got his report. That we can do right now, right?
Business, old business, whatever you want to talk about.
I don't have any, any reports.
I had no meetings last week.
You did yesterday.
Well, we did yesterday. We did the, the, with our consultant, Mike Day. We toured all the radio towers, control points, uh. I'm gonna, I was very surprised that, uh, everything appeared to be looking very good. Uh, small things to complete. I didn't see anything, I don't think we noted anything big as a group that needs completed. It was just small things. Tracy, did you pick up anything else?
Just two generators for Lincoln and for you.
Yep. And the generators were mouse-free.
Yeah.
That we did not expect. They, they put one new generator in and, what, two weeks later it had mice in it? And they've mouse-proofed it and there's no more.
How do they mouse-proof it?
That's a good question, 'cause it was supposed to be mouse-proof when it was installed.
Mayor? I had conservation last night. They did some, uh, interviews, I guess Friday, some candidates. Uh, oh, Shelby is gonna be on KGA, KGAN TV. I don't know, today, tomorrow, coming up over the roundhouse at Atkins.
Oh.
The tree grant. We're gonna talk about that. So, see the camel too?
They burned the wildlife, or the, the, uh, wildcat. They had a controlled burn on that I saw.
Yes.
Went by that on Sunday.
Not it. You weigh yourself today?
No, I don't weigh.
Gotta have a driver.
I drove.
She drove.
Ellie must think you're gonna talk a long time. She give you a half hour slide.
Why? Well, I didn't know with the new, you guys go over power lines or, no?
Pretty simple, I know.
You guys can go over other budgets while you're waiting.
Yep.
Okay, let's start early.
Okay.
So, this is basically just a little overview of BDG. Um, so Benton Development Group, we are the development, economic development organization for the county. Uh, we are a nonprofit. Um, we are a 501(c)(4), but we are fully funded by these lovely guys. So, I'm buttering you up, Tracy. Um, so, uh, we, we work with all the communities on any projects that they typically have coming in, whether it be small downtown projects or large industrial type of projects. Um, I, I tend to wear a lot of hats. I find myself involved in water issues within some of the cities or housing developments. It changes quite often. Um, this year, I think, was a little unique. It was an interesting year, uh, with funding, with grant opportunities, things like that, uh, with the economy the way it was and being an election year. Uh, we found ourselves, um, not having as many opportunities for funding mechanisms as we have had in the past. So, I'm hoping that that changes, but we were able to secure just under two million dollars, uh, for different projects throughout the county. Uh, typically, most of those projects fell underneath, uh, disaster recovery, federal funding mechanism, which provided some, uh, housing opportunities within Atkins. Bell Plain was awarded a project. Um, so, we're, we're thankful that we still had some of those opportunities this year. Uh, a couple of things that you may be familiar with or not familiar with. Um, in the past, we've helped like the city of Schelsberg with a grant for their, uh, Crinky Hanks Pizza on their downtown or the Tap House Brewery in Atkins. So, those are just some things just to familiar, familiarize you with BDG. So, we're basically the point of contact for all and any economic development within the county, so, um. What more do you want, Trace? We have, as a region, um, I can say that as a region this year, we do know that our request for proposals from the state for big projects, we were down in the first quarter. We were down to about, uh, two percent of what we were at last year. So, um, things have been really slow on, on the larger scale, but we're, we are seeing that picking back up a little bit right now, so. And with that said, being slow last year, we really put a focus, our organization put a focus on really standing the communities up from the inside out, really working on more community development type of projects. Um, and that seems to be working well right now, so. Yeah.
Five more.
Yeah, this is a, this is our, this is our older pamphlet.
Cause that never did get off the ground.
It didn't, no, no. So, this is our, that's already been put in there for an edit, so.
I see the one in the northeast corner of Locust and Benton is Blair's Town.
Where are you at? Oh, this. This, is that what you're just talking about? So, um, the, over the course of the last three years, we've had the state of Iowa, the Iowa Economic Development Authority, um, come into, we've chosen like two or three, four communities at a time. And the state, uh, leaders, some with Main Street Iowa, some with the Economic Development Authority, have come into our communities and we have provided, um, what they call a downtown walk-around. So, it's a three to four day intensive where we bring community leaders, city leaders in. We walk the community, talk about different opportunities. We have multiple. We walk the community, talk about different opportunities. We have multiple meetings with business orders, things like that. And then the state gives a really high level overview at the end of it and shows each of those communities, like what opportunities might present themselves in the community. This just happens to be a, a drawing that their architect had done. It happened to be a building that they were pointing out specifically in Blairstown during their downtown walk around. Is this the Blairstown one? Yeah, specifically during their downtown walk around, this is what the architect drew as just a, a vision. And it just, so it's an enticement factor in some respects. So we have completed every community in Benton County with the exception of Keystone, Norway, and Garrison. We tried to set those up this past fall, but there was little to no interest from the communities at that point in time, which I was a little surprised by. But, um, again, I think it, it was a busy fall with elections and things like that. So we will look at that again, but we have completed all the other communities.
I wonder if they weren't 100% sure about what you could provide?
Um, I, I communicate all of that. I mean, so.
I was here in Norway for four years and I don't remember.
Yeah, we, I mean, everything goes through the city, to the city clerks, you know? Uh, and so I guess we're depending on that to get passed along. But, you know, we do, so there's all the communities that we work with. I mean, realistically, there's half of them that are real engaged and the other half are not, you know? Yeah.
I'm gonna visit them.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's opportunities here.
Yeah, there's definitely opportunities. Yeah. So. And this is Lyle Morrow. He's the mayor of Bell Plain, but he's the president of Benton Development Group currently, so. Guess I should have said that to be, to begin with.
Was that named yet?
Okay, wrong.
What happens, what has happened the last four months? Any new businesses or?
Yeah, there's been some, definitely some new businesses. It's obviously in our, in our downtowns. There's, you know, helping stand up, you know, like a photography studio or, you know, different little things like that. Obviously, we've worked, like I said, we've worked on those big housing projects in the last 12 to 18 months. So renovation in Bell Plain specifically, a building that they've coined the Moore Building. It's got five apartments going in in the upper story. That was all federal funding, just over a half a million dollars. Then they received a, a grant for the lower level to put in restaurant basically in the lower level. So then there was. Yep, that's in Bell Plain. In Atkins, they put up some duplexes. It's, it's basically workforce housing is essentially what it comes, comes down to, but they received funding for that. The King Theater just received funding, just under a half a million dollars for the upper story living apartments. And this is, these are federal funding mechanisms specifically. So I, it does not fit the mold for all the communities or what. Oh, absolutely. Mm-hmm, yeah.
The, the other Main Street one, which, which blocks I locate, yeah?
The Moore Building?
Yeah.
In Bell Plain.
Tell me where the bakery was. Or is the Moore Building?
The Moore Building would be right next to the King Theater and then there's the open lot.
Just to the west.
That had the big construction going on off the back.
Yes, yeah. So those particular grants, the CDBG DR ones, we work hand in hand with EC cog on those, obviously. So they are, they kind of handle a lot of the federal stuff, red tape. But we're in the beginning, EC cog takes it over, it gets funded, then it goes to the developer and then we're back in. So, uh, we're really kind of the connector point to making all the pieces of the puzzle work with what we have going on, so.
And the CDB, uh, grants?
The CDBG DR.
Those are based off of the incomes of the residents, is that?
Yes and no. There's a percentage of, there's a percentage of those apartments that have to fall underneath the guidelines of income. But they consider it low to moderate income. But in Benton County, our low to moderate, our LMI is quite high, really. I mean, it's like a first year teacher salary, so we're not putting up slumlord, you know, type units or anything like that, so. Um, and the CDBG DR funding mechanisms, those, fortunately, but unfortunately, we had to have disasters in order for us to be eligible for those. So those are because of the duration, basically, so. So fingers crossed that they don't open up another line of, line of those grants, you know? Cause then we don't, we'd have to deal with more, more destruction, so.
So the money that we give you, I guess, you know, I, I was asking for, to see where the funds went. You know, I mean, is it mainly your wages then?
Well, 75 to 80% of it is my wages and then we spend 15 to 20,000 a year on marketing or special projects or providing the opportunities for the communities by bringing the state in. Then it's our day to day operations, which is quite minimal, office and things like that, but.
Do you have to pay for an office?
Uh, we do. It's very minimal though. Yeah, yeah. I mean, she was luckily, she's a board member and we're in her building, so she gives us a nice deal. But it's $250 a month for the space and, yeah. So, I mean, we operate on a quite, quite a small budget, but.
One question I have. Do we get, is she like this?
No.
No, that might help answer questions.
Cause their money isn't funneled through our claims like that?
Right.
It's an allocation so they get the lumps on.
Okay.
You're wanting something like, more like that?
Well, would help me understand it better.
So we have a hundred thousand dollar budget from you guys each year. 75 to 80% of that budget is wages and travel expenses. And then the rest is literally tied up to basically marketing for Benton County.
Any other communities involved?
No.
Given money?
No.
Can we get communities involved?
No. We have, uh, so this is my seventh year in this role. And we have had multiple board members, multiple board presidents in my, my time here. We've talked about assessing communities. We've talked about different ways to bring in money. I, I will also add that the REC does give us $6,000 a year, no questions asked, just because they, they support what we're doing with the economic development, you know, thing. But, um, there, there was always a debate on if we did an assessment with the communities, it's not fair because you've got two towns that are really doing the bulk of it. And then, um, the question always came up, oh, are you spending more time over here or over there? Well, and then it becomes a, well, they give us more money, so we need to do more here, you know? And everybody just kind of went away from that, right? They didn't wanna do that. So we've just been thankful that the supervisors have supported us and we've grown the organization. When I first started, we, we were, I don't know, I think it was like 65,000 a year is what we were budgeted off of and, and we're to this point now, so.
Any more questions? I do not have, I, I do not.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. If something comes up, just give me a jingle.
Anything in the wind?
Yeah, there's some stuff happening. There's definitely some big, potentially two quite, quite large projects that we are trying to secure for Benton County right now, so. But, but all, there's barriers, you know? And so we're just trying to overcome some of those things, so. And you know, you know what the big one is?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a good day.
Yes, I will.
Good to see you.
Or should I say goodbye?
Thanks guys.
We didn't, we wouldn't be on those, so. We waited for Derek.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. Do you want copies of those or do you have them?
I got copies. Are you talking about the invoices that print out? Yeah, I got those.
Okay.
Okay, Derek, we'll get into this Central Iowa vacation invoices.
Right, yeah. So you guys all received the email from Ray last week, kind of laying out the issues with the whole scenario, including the 28 to 8 agreement that we have with Central Iowa. And of course Haley has the copy of the invoices. And part of it is, or the way it's been understood is that it's a $250 per day kind of fee. And for one particular individual, cause they've been a difficult case, they have just increased it to $400. So we've been paying $400 on this one individual for some months now. And you'll see the invoices on how much is cost. And I think the issue is, is like, uh, there's nothing to where we see that there was any sort of agreement to like say these surcharges or, or whatever. Let alone, I don't even know where the 250 a day thing is unless it's in a different kind of agreement. Cause it's not in the 28 to E agreement. Because that's essentially like, uh, we're with a bunch of counties, other counties who are under the same kind of agreement. And so I know Ray posed the question of like, uh, the issue of like, if we not, do not want to pay the extra 150, do we want to send them a letter contesting it? Or do we want to just pay and move on? I know Ray has reached out to other, couple other facilities. One, the one in, I think it's Northern Iowa, they call it in Waterloo, and then Lynn County one. And of course he's got more details to that and their requirements and he's posed some questions back to them. It sounds like the Lynn County one is more susceptible to accept, say us as a whole. I don't know if Waterloo has just the room. I'm un, I'm uncertain, so Ray could probably answer that better cause he's contacted with them. But he has reached out to like different facilities that are closer to if we want to change that for the future as well.
Well now, you just, you secure a bed for X amount of days a year in Lynn County?
Correct.
Okay, and they didn't have any of these add on prices either, did they?
Hmm, I, that I can't answer per se, cause I think that's one of the questions Ray was kind of posing back to him. It's like, whether do we pay for the full year or if we can't fill the bed, how's that go? And he can probably answer that better than I could right now. Cause I wasn't a part of those conversations or he's just kind of, or he's asking them currently.
Was there, was there something said that if we, let's say we booked with Lynn County 250 days and all of a sudden we need 270, the price was then a lot higher for the additional than what was a, for their price.
And that thing you sent us possibly, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that if you exceed what you say you're gonna need, then this is the price now.
And let's say if we pay for 250, we pay for that, whether we got somebody in that bed or not.
But if you look at what we're paying for one individual.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. But those, those are all those hidden fees that you could.
And we've tried to itemize that and ask and they've not given us that.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, they've asked, I know Ray, I met with him and he's, they've asked for a schedule of these fees.
More than once and we've got Luke involved.
Apparently, it kind of looks to us like there is no schedule.
Well, it's almost like taking the cardinal mechanic for the oil change and all of a sudden they put on new tires and everything else because we thought it needed it, so we just did it.
And we've also not signed any amended 28Es or we're not locked into anything at this time.
And it's been difficult to even find one.
Right, yeah. I think it was back in 14 we found in the minutes.
Right, yeah, something like that. I think the one that we, that sent was, was it? Oh, 2012.
Yep, and then.
So that was when you first got into it.
Yep.
And nothing since.
Well, they've had some amendments, but we've never brought him to the board that I've been aware of or found any. And that's what he's trying to clarify with other counties as well.
And that's where the lawsuit is.
Yeah.
It's not our law.
No, but there is one currently going on.
It's with another county.
Yep.
And I think it, I, I'm not, I'm not for certain what it's, the issue is that they're being brought up. But, ah, I can't remember. I would have to look. But sometimes you don't, I think maybe the 28E could say like this is recurring until someone dissolutes or.
Yeah, but they don't think they gotta notify you the, the fee.
That's what we're kind of saying. And so that's where like Ray's wondering, do we want to reach out and be like, hey, what's up with this increase? And give us a reason why or where did we agree to this? Those kinds of things because it just seemed like it was one of those things where, oh, difficult case, we're gonna increase. And it just did and it just happened.
Without consulting anyone.
And a lot of those are outstanding because I had to hold off until we had more spending authority again with the amendment, so.
You're doing 67,000.
Mm-hmm, out of the new 100,000 I just asked for, so it's not leaving us with much the rest of the year either. So it's been a concern for more than just this year actually.
Ray got that, Ray got this from the state.
So that's, because then they talked in the meeting I went to, that it has to be filed with the state also.
Yeah.
And they were asking, they were having a tough time finding.
Yes, they got this, but the, and the dates, you know, when it was made, there's no signature. So how can they file that without?
That's what he's trying.
That could be just a copy. Is that, I think it's just a copy.
Cause he's sending out a list of all the counties that haven't signed and those that have. So that's what started this cleaning up. They're trying to get us all to sign and have board action. But that's when I asked Ray to research and they'll kind of do it a little more.
I'm not signing on nothing until we.
I, I. Well, we, we need a, uh, price list, I guess you'll call it. Pay schedule. These are what our fees are. This is just a blanket thing. They don't explain what they did.
No, and if you look at some of the services, they overlap when they put like the date range. They don't itemize it out what I'm paying for. So when we're looking at those invoices, how do I know it's not same thing on a prior invoice without it?
Did they send you a more detailed one of these guys or it was just this? Yeah, so.
We've tried and tried.
Not the others.
I, I, cause I, we can draft a letter or. I don't feel we should pay those with what we have.
And does anybody from this organization, have they ever come in in front of the board and discussed anything?
Years ago, I think, according to the old minutes that I've looked at, he has. But I think Rick sat in on those boards before and I don't, he didn't really report on it a whole lot. He'd come back and just say he attended, kind of like Ron, but like you just went to your first one, right?
Yep.
I don't know what all they discussed there.
Well, a lot of it was in closed session.
Yeah. So that's probably part of it. We can't come back and he can't inform us all.
Well, Rick, Rick was the previous rep, right?
Yeah.
I know this, a lot of, a lot of this 28E stuff and all that goes back into a closed session.
Yeah, it's just, just a blanket invoice. I, I just take this and be happy that you have it in service. It's difficult.
I mean, he would come and tell us I'm outstanding, but I didn't feel comfortable paying some of those. So that's why I explained them. I'm holding those until I got more easier.
Do we even have a document stating it's $250 a day? That's where, that's where I was kind of saying, based on the stuff that we, we have gotten, it just doesn't say, I mean, you guys read the 28E. have gotten, it just doesn't say, I mean, you guys read the 28E, it doesn't say anything other than you're joining counties, but I don't see anything. I mean, I haven't seen anything. And I don't, and I can't speak for Ray, but I think he's only saw what.
What we've got.
What we've, what we've got. So I don't know if that's just something where the group as a whole talks about or what. I don't know if it's just something like in those meetings that they talk about.
I know other counties are having concerns, because I've talked to other auditors too.
Right.
Well, they're all getting the same thing. We are just.
I mean, they want answers too.
Well, and rightly so. Because you're, you're asking for these, really they're, they're important services to function what we need to do, but it's just like, hey, we're going to raise the price because we need to have someone who's very difficult and they happen to be from your county.
I mean, if you look at our budget history on that line item, it's, I mean, we used to spend maybe 40,000 a year and we're, if you look at what we've done the last couple of years.
Just with Central Iowa.
Mm-hmm. I've had to amend the budget just because of them numerous times now. So it's like, now I'm like, well, do we put in high for next year? We've already kind of, Ray and I have already kind of discussed some things.
So if we, if we find another facility, do we have a, will there be an in stone contract with specific things that?
I, we can probably do so. We can probably ask that, though like, because again, it'd be like one of those agreements where you have to get board approval and.
Right.
And we can see if we can include all that, which I can't see why not unless there's something in the code that.
Because they're going to tell us upfront, like Lynn County, they already have, this is what it costs a day for the bed.
And then we have to negotiate too, the transfer fees, like if we're transferring that patient or if the detention center themselves transfers, then there's cost to that too.
But those are explainable and they should be done items and listed on, on an invoice.
Yep, it should be listed right out.
And I can't see why you can't, that like stay on article that says responsibilities of so-and-so detention center, do this, 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 this. Here's our responsibilities or we can figure out some sort of language. Of course, we'll probably meet on it and talk about it and see what you guys.
Transport, the Eldora, they, they do transports and we would get a same kind of invoice.
We don't even know if they did anything. They just added it up.
I, I, we got, I think we need explanation.
Well, and then I think Ray was also like if the patient's on Title 19 too, but once they're in the detention, right, that does not cover it.
Right. I, yeah, that, that's.
Because I think we were checking into that too. If you know that individual would be half Title 19, why aren't they picking it? Why is it following us?
And so that's, that's different things. We can pose this letter.
There's so many scenarios.
The state doesn't help with any of this.
It's one of those unfunded mandates.
Uh, there you go.
My favorite word, budget time.
That pops up a lot.
Yep.
By goodness gracious.
So they're asking payment off of these invoices.
Correct.
I don't, I'm not comfortable paying those because we have nothing saying what the rate is.
What services were provided or yes, what was done.
We obviously know that person was in there, but yeah.
So I'm getting the feeling you would like a letter to be drafted and assuming they get looked over by you guys and sent to them? Is that the feeling I'm getting?
That's what I'm leaning forward towards. I mean, the, this is, current launch says, ooh, this is it. What about you? You got some explaining to do. What is this for?
Last month it was, we had a different kid in there. Okay, that kid wasn't difficult, but now this, this one is and.
Because we did have some open records requests in regards to this stuff too, so.
Yeah. And wasn't it by them? Yeah. Being Central Iowa.
And that's what made me really go back and start looking through minutes and.
So it seems that they don't even know, um.
Are they going to send?
I know, that's why I'm like, if I don't have it and they don't have it, well, where did it exist?
Unless like the Secretary of State has it, which I would assume, because like the 28Es have to be filed with them.
I think the older one that Ray did send us was, was it in 14?
12.
12. Because I think at one time we bounced to from Central Iowa to Northern Iowa and then back, when I go back prior, prior years.
We were, we were with Eldora and then we went to Waterloo and then we went back to.
So we had some.
Then it was all over funding, how much it was costing.
I can, I can start working on that for you guys.
I know, I, I'm in favor of it.
Do we have anyone in there now?
I don't know where this particular person is right now. I'll let Luke.
I thought we had a different one in there currently.
It could be. Luke could tell us that.
I think that's who kind of told me the last time I saw him in the hallway.
We did, okay, paid some of them bills over, didn't we? In the claims?
Yeah, but do you want to wait? Some of them are in this claim run.
No.
Last week's?
I think they're in this claim run. I think we should remove.
Because I had to wait until the amendment.
Bam.
Here, let me look.
I think there's four of them in there.
I was thinking of all medical.
Some of them, yeah, and then those come differently.
Are those spelled out any better?
Let me look. Let me pull up a different one. We did pay some on February 11th. We paid 8,332.25 for medical, we did a transport and then another medical, but none of those big ones have been paid. So I feel like we had to pay the medical and the transport, but for their services we have not paid.
And Luke, Luke signed off on that.
Yeah. Yeah, because these are different individuals that we paid on the other, so I'm looking at a few of their ones. Because some of them just get there and get treated and get released.
And Haley, you said you reached out to them trying to get more itemized and, okay, I just want to make sure.
And I have those emails too, and I usually copied Ray on all those.
Okay.
We don't charge any annual or monthly fees to counties, is what we were told. And I think the reason for the open records request is probably that court case.
It is, well, yes, yeah.
13, 13,500, 13,500 on this claim that we.
Yeah, and those were all like medical transport.
Yes.
So it's not those other ones that were.
It ain't none of these.
Like four of them in there?
Yeah. Or five.
And they're, like I said, I just looked at a few of their different patients and that other one.
I would suggest draft a letter if we can't.
Yep.
Come together.
Yep.
Kids got a little more about it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean essentially the way I understand it, what was sent to you all last week is what we all have.
Well, I read through that. It's long.
Thank you. It's cool. I can, we can do that and we can share that to get okayed and.
I guess in your letter also if they would furnish the last 28E agreement that was signed by the supervisors. And I'm thinking the only one that I have seen was the original one.
That's the last one I found was of this year. It's resolutions.
When was that dated? The original one?
2012.
2012?
June of 2012, I believe.
I believe.
And so it's been, it's been a while.
Well, it's definitely time to listen over.
But I, but like I said too, I think there might have been something in there where it says it's.
No, I just have a hearing.
Thing until someone says we're no longer going to.
We're not going to do the same.
Yeah, I think.
With or without cause?
We do have another meeting tomorrow, Derek, if you were to draft that, that's enough.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
I'll try.
Otherwise next Tuesday is probably, that's another week.
Another week.
Okay.
Give you some time.
Yeah.
All right. And Derek.
Yeah, you bet.
I guess you got some direction there.
Got something.
Something about whether or not it'll help.
I just can't imagine somebody sending a blanket invoice like that without, I mean, just expect it when you take it.
That's been, we've been questioning it for a while, especially like my girls that do claims, they like, we need to know what.
What this is all about.
Because if we're auditing, I mean, we can't even explain what these services were.
Yeah, I mean, it's just Canada. Yeah, I would think an auditor would look at that and say, what?
Well, I mean, and they know it's been our huge, huge increase.
Right.
They've been noted in our fiscal report.
Okay, well, Jean.
Okay.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, Derek.
Good morning, everybody. Handout, everybody.
Thank you.
This summarizes our services. There you go. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to come and visit with you this morning. We certainly at HACAP appreciate the support that you give us. As you can see from our funding application, we use the funding you give us to support three different areas of our operations in Benton County. We use the funding to support our Fourth Street Diner and Senior Center here in Vinton. That's where the bulk of the funding goes. We also use some funding to support our Belle Plaine Senior Dining Program. And there we average about 40 meals a day and we serve both congregate and home-delivered meals. And then we use some funding to support our housing program in Belle Plaine. We have three apartments and one home that we make available at below market rate rent to homeless or near homeless families. And those units are all full at this particular time. And in Vinton, our, we call it our North Benton site, we serve about 90 meals every day and that includes both home-delivered and congregate. And one of the unique things about that site is we serve on Sundays as well too. A lot of sites don't serve on Sunday, but we do, so we have a great attendance on Sunday. So once again, we certainly appreciate the support you give us there and we couldn't do it without you, so thank you for that. And now I'd just like to share with you a recap of the services that HACAP provides, provided in Benton County last year. We served almost 1,600 people in 942 households. And the households received 489,128 dollars in direct assistance plus another 537,000 dollars in food assistance, making that about 1.3 million dollars in assistance that we put in Benton County for services. And the top needs in Benton County were housing, which included home repairs, mortgage and rent assistance, utilities and food assistance. And in our affordable housing initiative, we served over 1,200 people living in 600-plus households with energy assistance, and that's the low-income energy assistance program that provides the assistance payment to the heating vendor in the wintertime to keep heat in the home. We had four households that we weatherized and that includes putting energy efficient measures in that home. It can be some insulation and also oftentimes a furnace replacement and water, hot water replacement, heater replacement and a new refrigerator. We also did some furnace replacements, just furnace replacements, that if they had, needed some emergency or crisis replacement, and that was done in nine different households. We had two veteran households that we provided housing assistance to. And as I mentioned earlier, we had four families living in our Belle Plaine homes and apartments in, in that community. In our food assistance strategy, we served over 37,000 meals at Belle Plaine, or here in Vinton, and over 20,000 meals in Belle Plaine, and distributed over 300,000 pounds of food to partner agencies that we have, that our Feeding America Food Bank has here in Benton County. And then they in turn distribute that to patrons that come to their food pantries and feeding programs. We have great partnerships here in Benton County with those faith-based food pantries or community-based food pantries that distribute that food. And then we also have our Head Start Program. We have 16 full-day, full-year slots that are in operation, I believe, from 7:30 in the morning to 5:30 in the afternoon. And with a full-day operation through not only the school year, but the summer, that allows parents to work and go to school. So we're supporting not only kids being, supporting them in getting ready to go to school, but also allowing parents to increase their earning ability by being able to work and go to school and earn, being able to earn more money. So, once again, we appreciate the support you provide us and we couldn't certainly do this without you helping us, so. We look forward to you naming a representative to our Board of Directors. I assume you're probably going to be doing that?
We did.
Okay.
Ron.
Okay, very good. I'll be getting in touch with you then to let you know when our next board meeting is. We meet the last Thursday of the month at 5:30 and there's always the option of either attending in person or attending by Zoom. So I'll get you added to our roster, Ron, and get you the board orientation packet and all that information. So, welcome to our board. Okay, great. So, any questions I can answer?
Maybe so. I think you're asking them over 70,000.
Right, uh, mhm, yeah, right. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you for the opportunity. It's always fun to come out and meet with supervisors and talk about what we do. So feel free to, hey, stop by our Vinton Center for lunch someday and eat with the seniors there. You know, they'd love to have you, Linda would love to have you stop by, join them for lunch.
Have to let them know in the morning.
Yeah, right, just let them know and they'll have a meal prepared for you.
There you go, we could do that on our budget days when we need lunch brought in.
That's right, you should let Linda know that you need something, so, okay? Thank you.
Take a plan ahead.
She would love to do that, so. Thank you. It's great to see everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five minutes.
Okay, and we look forward to seeing you at our board meetings.
And I scanned all that stuff back to correct last week.
Yes, yeah, you did. I got it. Thank you very much. Get ready for the snowstorm tomorrow.
No.
I know.
They're wrong.
I'm hoping so too.
They were wrong Saturday, so.
Yes, I'm hoping so too. And really, they were wrong this morning too, because it was supposed to snow overnight.
Just a little flood.
Yeah, right.
I'm not sending this.
Bye-bye, thank you.
See ya.
All rise.
Yeah.
Do you even quite forget? Marjorie's don't scoop out here for the food pantry.
Yes, they do.
They do shovel, shovel?
They do the back.
Oh.
That's part of the. Yeah, they do. They have a sidewalk crew.
Okay. She had to do it last time.
Check on her. Well, they're not in a hurry.
We'll never know what time they get here on Tuesdays, so.
Blast, blast them out.
Here, I'll help you out, Ron.
But this is.
I got orange on Zeke's.
It's cold. It's cold in here too, by the way.
Is it?
I'm always cold. Said it was.
But this is the one that, that has to be signed off on, then. They have to sign it.
Once they approve it?
Yeah.
Yep, cause then that'll go to that person, right?
This is the original one, so who, does that go, I'll give that to Julia.
Yeah, her, I could scan it. She's here today.
No.
She'll be here tomorrow.
Cause I can throw them that slot, too.
Yep.
I didn't know if you had to have a copy too much of it signed, or?
Yeah, she, I will.
Okay.
I'll, so I'll do, I'll take it and then, cause I'll see her tomorrow, and then I'll get a copy and make sure she gets that.
Did you bring your glasses, did you?
No, I didn't. It's printed fairly well.
Looking for ground and maintenance?
Yep, Department fifty-one. I thought, it's probably, we've had it a few, few weeks.
Got it. H R.
It's one of the, Justin was one of the first ones to get it done.
I T G I S. We didn't have a school, it's noticing.
That's true.
It's coming.
And there.
It's coming.
Sheriff. I don't know.
Need help?
Help. M H D D. Auditor.
Oh, you found yours. What a good boy.
Auditor elections.
Right there. Green.
Oh, green, maintenance.
What, no tree?
This should be in the green.
All right.
This one was looking pretty good till Haley.
Yeah, thanks, Haley.
You're welcome.
But money.
That's what Dean told me to put in there for that hazard mitigation.
We were proud, ours was thirty thousand less, but Haley's messed it up.
Well, that's why I thought it was.
It was, it was short-lived.
But then I had to add more because, um, remember at that EMA meeting, we found out that Steve Meyer won't be doing the RFP, the five-year hazard mitigation? And it comes out of their budget.
It comes out of theirs?
But we're always paying for it.
That's what, yay! Surprise.
They get a lot out of theirs, that, it's because it's grounds and maintenance, like the capital outlays and.
Yeah, it's just, that's just one of those, they say, oh, where's that come from? Oh, grounds and maintenance, they'll pay for it.
But you're still under what you had.
Yeah.
I agree.
We're nice guys.
What's the date on your report?
One thirty-one.
It should've been in there.
I meant a one twenty-six.
What are you looking for?
The line item that I increased.
Oh, that is called, uh, Planning and Management. Four-two-nine-zero-zero-zero.
Four-two-nine-zero.
Seven-five-hundred, I increased it to, what did I say?
Thirty.
Thirty.
From seventy-five.
They're in there. Seventy thousand.
I wanted to talk.
And that's every five years, you said that?
So, yeah, theirs does have to go up.
This one, that's because it's a guess, you don't know what it's gonna cost this year.
Right, Dean will go out for RFPs, so, that's kind of our rough estimate.
Okay.
The last time it was like twelve.
So, what made it, you estimated high, so.
Yeah, yeah.
By the way. No surprises.
Yeah.
First line is Rick. Second line is Justin.
If you say so.
Yes, it is, he did bring his glasses, it is.
There's a split between the two fines, if you remember, the seventy-thirty percent. I don't know if Bruce remembers. So, remember I said General Supplemental can cover stuff for like the state and the courts?
Right.
So, a few years ago, we did the whole courthouse and divided it up by how much square footage is ran by the courts, the courtroom and all that.
Okay.
And we justified splitting their salaries and expenses seventy-thirty.
Okay. Done.
For part-time, Sarah?
Yep, yep.
The fan still squeaking?
No, cause it hasn't been on.
Fix it.
Turn it off?
Yes, it will.
What'd you do, I turned it off?
Sometime.
I got a big step, or a big, big step ladder.
Ten foot?
Uh-uh, sixteen?
That's better, cause we have a ten and it won't, it won't come close.
Either sixteen or twenty, it's just, I gotta use a car trailer to haul it.
Well, here's the other problem you might run into. We have a hard time getting that ten footer up the stairs and around the corner.
I figure you can get it in the door and then rope it, yep.
Oh, that's right, go through the circle?
Yes.
See how many light bulbs we can take out, try to get it up there.
It is an idea, it does.
Well, we gotta have something.
Okay.
And with those chairs there, it's hard to set up scaffolding.
Yep, I agree. I'm just saying, I got this ladder, that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Gonna bring it in tomorrow? It's okay, I'll wait.
Thank you. Remember, we're going over your plating, so I can cut the second leg right away.
Ah, that's fine, just wipe that thing out.
Wipe out, you never know it's there.
That's right.
Uh, one thing I see, it's pretty light, what was that?
Yeah.
Yeah, way up high. You got that way back?
Right, yeah, yeah, because we're not plugging it.
Good.
That was for, that was for the plugging seating.
Really?
If we do it in the fall.
Yeah.
But I did it last year, I probably won't do it this year.
Good.
Cause it doesn't do any good when it's hard to rock.
And it's getting frustrating, cause I got people that pass that are just wandering through the yard anyway.
Yep.
That they don't walk on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I walk on the sidewalk.
If there was a way to stop that, I would.
And then you have that hundred thousand to fix the roof.
Building the grounds?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's seventy-three bucks, yeah, yeah, it's a hundred and five total. Between the two budgets.
We're still waiting for that individual to contact you yet? Without me in name?
Oh, for the bell tower?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you talked to, um, he said he thought he was still gonna get to it, so.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're, I mean, it's hard to, uh, no matter who you get holding, we're gonna go on the waiting list now.
Yep. I ran with Kate here two weeks ago, I think. You're probably not the guys to talk to, any who's up the clock?
No, good, no news is good news.
Anyone would like to see it all?
Yep. I have relation that would like it, too.
Ray.
Say, I, I'm happy the way it is.
Ray sent pictures. I think that could've even been before you were supervisor.
It was end of December.
I think so.
I know they talked about it.
Yes. Totally progress.
They talked about it, or thought it was gonna be here in the December.
Cause wasn't he wanting to display it in the courthouse a little bit?
He wanted you, and I said, just put it up there.
Well, if that's the case, wait till it's warmer to put it up there. Cause he's gotta do the, I think they might change that face out on the one end.
Plus the hands.
Plus the hands, maybe, since you don't have to have the historical. But they kept that there evidently with that grant they had, cause they had so much historical, I think, still.
You mean that east face?
Yeah, that east face.
Yeah.
It's still glass with the, and so I don't know if that was gonna change or not.
Yeah.
That's the only one that still has the hands on it, cause they couldn't, they didn't wanna take it apart.
Yeah, I don't think there was a date saying where you're gonna have it done.
Oh, okay.
I don't think there was.
I'm, I'm hoping more turns spring.
Yeah, I know, suddenly you got heat.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Now you're gonna have no heat tomorrow, if you're burning your heater today.
You know, in all honesty, though, for as big a building as this is, the heat bill is cheap. And this, the natural gas, we might be over, but we never had a full winter on that boiler until this year.
Really?
We have no clue what, because we've had two mild winters, or it went in late. So, this is the first year that we've had a big load on it, it's actually running a lot cheaper than we figured, so.
I put that in our pie chart, like to the state.
Yeah.
For one of our energy efficient boilers.
It is.
Does that count?
Yep.
Yeah. But yeah, this is the first winter, a hard winter, that we've had on it.
In for expensive, not toys, but like well-mowers, you just got one here a year ago.
Yeah, we're looking at possibly doing the tractor here.
Not this one, not this year, but the next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, uh.
You just gotta prove for that.
Yep.
Yep. The, uh, looks like it's working good.
Yeah, that's all we've used so far, it works great.
The thing on the tractor is just, I mean, it's getting up there in age, but it's got a lot of, the ice melted off its back, which is starting to hit bad. And we're just thinking about while we potentially, it'll be, is it fourteen, fifteen years old?
It's a two thousand and ten or twelve. Problem is, we're not really using it a whole lot either.
Yeah, but I just thought down the line, we'd think about doing something with it. But that's just a thought. Go with one with a better cap on it, too. Those cold windy days, when we do have them, it's cold.
Email from Ray was end of January, pictures. Yep, you got it.
He sent it to you?
No, Ray sent it to us.
That was in January?
January twenty-fourth. And then, oh, yeah, Lori just sent me the same email I just looked up.
And then one other thing we're gonna have to look at is the sidewalks around the, that whole block. There's a lot of the up and down.
Toe grabbers?
Toe grabbers.
Especially out in the parkings from the curb coming in, there's a lot of settling out in different places.
What's the, as far as the, isn't there like a code or a maximum that you can have?
You want them smooth.
Yeah, you definitely, but I mean, at a certain point, you have to.
And then, I mean, it's just, the front steps are, the concrete out front settled way in one corner away from the steps pad there. But the parkings are the worst, going around, you had different places. So, they either need jacked up or some stuff needs smoothed out. But it just depends, the back half where it's been flooded, the concrete separated, the joints have gotten a lot bigger. And that's from all the flooding it took for the last, you know, last two floods. But we gotta think about doing something there for somebody falls.
Is that something we could have that, uh, guy that fixed emergency management look at?
Iowa wall sawing.
But I know they did the outside of the west door, and that come out pretty good.
Yeah, but you, like I said, you walk around, it's more on the parking, it's worse than anything. But I do have a spot out where that stairwell comes out on the front, and then the main stairwell of the building, it's sunk a lot right in there for some reason.
Oh, that's a problem?
Yeah, on the east, on the south side.
Oh, south side.
Maybe the weather gets a little better.
And then that back stairwell, I don't know if we can ever get that brought back up.
I don't know how thick it is.
That lift keeps getting a little bigger going out the back door.
They impressed me at Polyfix, the sheriff's office.
That's, and like I said, we did it out front there, but we're gonna have to think about.
Is that foam?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're gonna have to think about going around and touching up quite a bit of that, just trip hazards and stuff. And it's more around the storm sewers and that, where it's really settled.
Good.
And you notice it quite a bit when you're hit with a plow.
Well, yeah.
Stop, see that's what.
Those are some things we gotta think about, but.
Well, I still got that Joe at Polyfix's number yet, so.
Polyfix is what you call it.
You know what I mean? Having to come up here and take a look at it. Cause it wasn't that much to do the outside of the west, uh, entrance.
That was like five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it was key for all get out, you know, I mean, you couldn't even think about busting that out of the corner for what he did it for. And it worked. That's the biggest thing.
So, they can just, instead of, I don't know if they charge a trip charger, but you can.
But.
Well, he's been coming out here and giving me estimates. And I mean, and then he holds true to the estimates, cause the sheriff's office, uh, force of the building settled inside there. So, when they build it, they build a cement wall all the way around it, and then, there again, me being a contractor, being picky about it, they did not pour the inside slab on top of the wall, they stopped short of the wall.
Oh.
So consequently, being dry the last couple of years, it evidently must've sucked the moisture out of underneath that cement. And the outside walls, it went down three inches.
Oh, it has?
Yes.
Yeah, on the EMA side, it dropped a ton.
Yeah, you could actually stick your hand underneath the center walls, into the next room, laying on the cement, it settled that much. And they brought it back up, didn't have to move any furniture or anything out. It worked, they brought her back up.
There's a really small hole.
Yep, three-eighth inch hole.
That's a small hole.
Yep.
Cause usually the holes are like.
Yeah, that's when they were pumping sand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that supplement was impressive.
Cause I know I got him coming up here, wanna get better weather, to hack him in a couple of jobs. You know, I might give him a call and tell, run up a bit here and take a look and.
Like I said, it's something, it's just something we need to address.
Okay, all right. But I don't see nothing outstanding in your budget that'll worry you about.
Too bad you got a slot with that thirty thousand, oh.
I was happy, I said, man, we dropped ours a lot.
We talked about it, it's not a problem.
I did tell you first, though.
That it on that, then?
That's it, I have the work I can do.
Nope, I don't, honestly, I think.
Okay.
Looks good, thank you.
Since we're all done with all these revisals and like those things, all.
We need to approve the hiring of
Okay.
A custodian for here.
Do you have that all of the?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
She had that on there.
I have.
That's why I bring it.
Okay. Okay, I see it, so who is it?
Tess Ware. She actually works for DHS over here.
Okay.
So, she's looking for part-time work.
Right.
And wants to do it.
What's the amount and when?
Twenty.
Twenty dollars makes sense, isn't it? Is it down there?
Over there.
Yeah, twenty oh eight. Five hours a week total. I cut back the hours.
That's for both sides, right?
Yeah, that's for both sides, so it's two hours for DHS and three hours for Benton County a week.
Okay.
DHS cut their time way back, with the previous girl, anyway. And then, for what we have here, three hours a week's plenty.
Hallway, bathroom.
Bathrooms and conference room.
That's it, right?
You know, in a week's, yeah. And then once in a while, like Julia would ask to have her office vacuumed. And I told this Tess that I can, if she had to stay late for doing something like that, I can go more on hour, but I have it set at three hours a week.
When's she gonna start?
The twelfth, tomorrow.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to hire Tess?
Tess Ware.
Ware.
That twenty dollars and eight cents an hour?
Yes.
All right, I'll make that a motion. All right, I'll make that a motion.
Second motion. Albrecht, move. Even I tip it.
Aye.
Rules?
Aye.
You have a hire.
You're good because you started well, right?
Yeah, I'm hoping so.
You want him to sign that letter, Rick? Have him sign that, and then I'll get a copy back.
Or do you just want to keep it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we'll see grace, urgent grace.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Enjoy the heat.
Thank you, gentlemen.
My hands will thank you. It's hard to type when they're froze.
I thought we had that set to turn out.
Oh, wait, maybe.
I don't think it has been.
I'll look on the computer when I get it.
Okay.
Warning.
About to get busy for you guys, isn't it?
That's what it's sounding like. Wouldn't bother me if it was incorrect forecast and... Maybe everything we've heard the last three days is incorrect. Tomorrow afternoon, we'll find nothing but sunshine. I don't know. If it was April first, I would say April Fools, but we're not quite there yet.
No, but we're getting closer.
Mm-hmm. You want to do the three side items first, or do you want to jump? Um... Here, a short while back, you approved total sheet plan set for a bridge replacement on Thirty-second Avenue Drive, uh, in Florence Township. The property owner on the east side of that project is Kent and Jolene Croft. The property owner on the west side of that project is Russ and Kim Marcus. To build the bridge and the road, and the road approach with current standards, with, uh, shoulder width and slopes, we needed just a tiny bit of right away from both of those individuals. Um, had an individual out contacting those people going through, had done some research on land values and met with them and got, uh, a purchase agreement signed by both parties, uh, for that additional right away. What I have is the purchase agreements. For each one of those, that needs board approval and notarized signature.
Just the north little crick, Benon Cankin?
Uh...
Big crick.
The, the bridge with the weight embargo on it right now in the south of Marcus's place.
Well, it is a big bridge.
Mm-hmm.
That's the one you're gonna replace?
Correct.
How much property are you gonna talk about?
Very little. They measured it in square feet as opposed to acres. Yes. Yes, there are. I was just looking at them last night. That's where I was headed when I met you, I think. Um, but for Russ and Kimberly Marcus, eleven hundred, eleven thousand one hundred and fifteen square feet, so you're talking, what, four... No, quarter of an acre, roughly. Um, one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, a tiny, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-three square feet of temporary easement to allow for some material storage and blending in the stream bank to the project at, uh, thirty dollars total, and then fence and some other landscaping, uh, compensation of twelve hundred dollars for a total of two thousand nine hundred dollars to the Marcus family. Um, and then, for Kent and Jolene Croft, it's only nine thousand four hundred and five square feet needed of permanent easement for a total of one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. Temporary easements, two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven square feet at twenty-five dollars. Um, and no additional compensation asked for, for anything else there, so a total of one thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
Can I, uh, get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, easements, the purchase and, and the easements for the bridge repair, Thirty-second Avenue Drive.
Second. Do you have any problems getting hold of Kent this time?
No, his, I think, they probably got a hold of Kent or Jolene initially, and then they were working with one or both of their sons. Um, and, yeah, I actually learned through this process where Kent and Jolene live right now, and was told that information isn't easily given, but I happen to have somebody that works at that facility, and she said, yeah, they do. I guess you must know something if you have an address. Uh, eleven, twenty, twenty-five. Oh, grab that. Oh, and I hand you this, uh, Tracy. Uh, the DOT is going to add right turn lanes on Highway thirty at Thirty-second and Thirty-third Avenue. Um, I would anticipate later this construction season. I haven't seen the plan's final date of, uh, proposed lighting. Uh, the bridge project that we're signing the purchase agreements in is gonna be in the DOT's April letting. Um, but at Thirty-third Avenue, we have five intersection lights that light up that intersection. Um, one is, two of them are gonna be impacted with this project. The one that's right there on the north side of Highway thirty, east side of Thirty-third, and then the one that's on Thirty-third will be in the area of where they're doing their work. So the DOT asked if we would be willing to eliminate those lights. I said, no, I was not interested in doing that, and so they are incorporating moving those lights with part of the project, but moving those lights will be at our expense. So I have a pre-construction agreement with the DOT. They are estimating twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and twenty-three cents to remove those lights, remove the footing, put in a new footing, reinstall those two lights, and put all new LED lights on all of five of the poles. I need a motion and approval by the board and the chairman's signature.
You have it figured out?
Yeah, this has been figured out, right on, is that the Atkins Corner?
Atkins Corner, be a mile in from Lynn County. Used to be a state road twenty-plus years ago, Benton County. Graciously accepted, uh, all of the little stub roads that DOT had in Benton County with legislative action in early two thousand.
Turn lane there?
A right turn lane, much like, uh, the right turn lanes are offset at, uh, the Van Horn, Blarston Corner at both intersections.
They're doing one on west side, though, too, they think.
Correct. They'll be done together. They won't be closed at the same time, but they will be doing both, uh, as one project. As I understand it.
I'm surprised I haven't done anything at the, the Norman Corner by Hope's. There's a lot of... And you come, when you're headed east on Highway thirty, that gets, somebody's turned right. To go on the thirty, somebody, I mean, it's, it's probably, they haven't pulled it in. But it has, I'm sure that has to do with the amount of cars they use.
Mm-hmm. That and, that and accident history, but, uh, I can't remember if it's still there now, but the DOT has had a portable camera, or a portable generator with a camera stand on it at Thirty-third, and have been monitoring turning traffic, uh, according to their staff that have been reviewing camera footage. There have been about one vehicle every two months. I think there was twenty-three and twenty-four, thirteen and a twenty-four. I'm trying to remember now if it was one per month or one every other month. Somebody has turned to go, um, east on the westbound traffic.
Don't like that.
Which is one of the reasons they were thinking that eliminating the intersection light might help there. They have asked if I would turn it off for a few months prior to construction and during construction, just to see if that changes any patterns, but... Um, but based on their estimated cost on bid items, that's where they came up with an estimated cost for doing that.
We're paying for it, but you need to do the work.
Correct. I was, uh, we're, I was offered to do the work, and my fear was that I'd get the posts or the footing put back up someplace I didn't want it, and I'd have to do the job twice, and, or, you know, hire somebody to do it. It was, and the DOT is graciously allowing the poles to just sit at the new hall DOT shed while the work's being done, because they were asking for a location to store them on our property. And I'm like, well, if the DOT wouldn't have any problem, outside of Vinton's main shop, I don't have a place for those fifty-foot poles. I'm hoping it'll actually end up being less than that, but that's just their estimated cost and that the actual, uh, bids received when that project's put together might be a little under that. But that way, the two lights will get reinstalled and put back up there.
Side note, you didn't have nothing to do with the condemnation hearing January fourth, right?
No. No, that's all DOT ground and nothing.
Yep. So can I take a motion to enter into agreement with the DOT over the lights at that in the corner?
So move.
Yeah. And second then?
Second.
Okay. All four rules.
Tippet, aye.
Even aye.
Rules, aye.
Thanks, guys.
Do you already know that?
No, me?
Yeah.
My vehicle?
Mm-hmm. Four o'clock last night, and I need you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Where are we at resolution numbers, Haley? Last week, I was number seven, I believe. You wanna wait for Ron or keep moving?
Yeah, you better. That way you know what's going on.
Okay.
Fremont Township, uh... Seventy-four, seventy, Seventy Streets. You're putting a bridge in there?
Mm-hmm.
Is that gonna be a culvert or a probably cement box covered in it?
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, I see they closed the road yesterday.
Crane takes up a little bit more room than it's comfortable to pour ground, but...
So hopefully, they won't start pouring any cement until, uh, weather's a little bitter.
They might pour, pour the floor this afternoon.
Really? Are they already?
They don't stand around, think about how to do things, they just get it done. The rebar came in this morning, they'll pour the floor this afternoon.
No kidding?
They've tentatively planned it for two o'clock, so...
Because they didn't close it till yesterday, right?
Mm-hmm.
Did they tore it out that fast?
Mm-hmm.
Wowza.
Well, there wasn't anything to tear out.
Oh, there wasn't?
No.
There was a culvert there, wasn't it? No?
Do we have to add anything to the concrete, which is cold, or do we just pour it?
Uh, use hot water.
Hot water?
Yeah.
Okay, well, on the back.
On the back.
Uh, we signed a contract here, remember, that was not too long ago, for a bridge replacement, uh, project on Twenty-sixth Avenue Drive, it's just out here northeast of Vinton, uh, between the high road, Fifty-Eighth Street and Fifty-Fifth Street Drive. Um, that contractor would like to close the road, bring his equipment in, and get started later this month, on the nineteenth of February is what he is planning. I have a resolution number twenty-five dash eight to temporarily close that road during construction, um, so they can get that bridge tore out and replaced. Uh, they've got a contract that allows them seventy-five working days. I would say, depending on how the weather cooperates on this, um... Three to four months.
Do I have a motion?
I'll take a motion for close the road, uh, resolution twenty-five dash eight. Twenty-fifth, seventh drive, to the town. Second motion. Tippet, aye.
Even aye.
Rules, aye. We all gonna sign this?
You all get to sign it.
There's two of them there.
Oh, there's two of them?
Two of them there, yes.
Have we heard anything on the Rumble Strip?
Working on various safety measures at that intersection, Rumble Strips were a strong recommendation and previous board of supervisors recommended, uh... voted in favor of getting Rumble Strips in just about every intersection location around the county. So when the DOT had that project, we cut those Rumble Strips in. The question that has been posed, um, is, could they be removed because of their proximity to Folkman's residence? Um, since the Rumble Strips have been in, were installed, the county has gone out and added amber flashing lights on the stop ahead signs, um, added red flags on the stop ahead signs, actually added a second stop ahead sign on the opposite side of the road with flashing beacons on the, that north side of that intersection near Folkman's residence. They're already installed. They're already installed. Um, I've gotten just recently a price from a sign vendor for, uh, blinker flashing stop signs with the LED lights around the perimeter of the stop sign, or a red flashing light above the stop sign that the DOT has said that they would allow to be placed, um, at their stop sign location on the island there in Highway 30. Um, I haven't had a chance to, I was told by another vendor that if I went directly to the company, he thought the blinking signs on the perimeter of the stop sign might be cheaper than the actual flashing red light. I haven't had a chance to compare that pricing to two to see, but, um, the previous Board of Supervisors said, let's get everything else installed at that intersection before we consider taking the Rumble Strips out. Now that's...
The DOT is good with that thing? Do you think removing those Rumble Strips after we get all these other things done?
I would say that the Rumble Strips are a county action and not a DOT action.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, the start to your budget. One page.
Ten, but I think the last page is pretty much just a summation of... Last two pages are almost summations of things, so it's really eight pages of expenditures and one page of revenues. What's that?
I run those separate for him.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on the land, we'll start off the first one right away.
Sure.
That's probably the Blairstown area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, could get there. Okay.
What is, uh, am I asked questions that I, I just, I don't know?
Sure.
SR, M A T L, MC 70. First page, second line.
Oh, you're on the revenue. You're looking at the...
Oh, backwards.
You're looking at the revenue, I think.
Yep. There's one of 10.
Everybody's sick leaving this room.
Yeah, one of 10?
Yep.
Okay, we're all on the same page then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then roads, okay, you got the 800,000 in there, okay?
Yep.
That's, I see you.
That's, that's, I think I had split that 800-plus thousand and possibly doing some of the work ourselves, so that's why I threw 800,000 in there, and there's 50,000 of, couple lines above, that salaries of regular employees, secondary is cut off, but some of that would be potentially our work, um...
And then the other 60?
The 65,000.
65,000, quarter mile?
Uh, no, actually, the 65 I threw in there is that in thinking and recalling this agreement that we just signed with the DOT for the lights. We've signed agreements for, uh, with the DOT when the DOT resurfaced Highway 150 going north out of Vinton to do the side roads at around $65,000. I have not been billed for that. I noticed on, when the 218 interchange was done, it was about five years after that agreement was signed before I ever got a bill from the DOT to pay for our part of the project, and so, uh, 2026 is coming close to that five year. I mean, they might show up in the next three months, and I may have to figure out how I'm paying for this fiscal year, but, uh, both the 65,000 for, uh... Roads asphalt concrete, and the 345,000 that was below it for concrete is for all of the intersections on Highway 30, work that we, that I asked to have them extend beyond Highway 30 at each of the rock roads, um...
You have that in also last year's budget too?
No, I've never had that in the budget.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I've forgotten all about it, so...
This is for past work?
This is for past work that we haven't been billed for yet. I got to digging earlier this week, or late last week, and I'm like, wait a minute, I don't recall ever receiving an invoice from the DOT for those. Well, 218 ended up being, or Highway 30 was two projects, but they ended up being back to backs, so it almost felt like one really long, long project.
So we've got a, on that first page?
Yeah.
You got overtime and a shift pay, and overtime, shift pay, shop, maintenance shop, and, um, some secondary roads, and then below it, we've got the FICA, the IPers, the Medicare, and the health insurance. Um, I'm assuming the, the rest of the wages is someplace else?
Yes, um...
Cause those figures were awful high for those 1,000, 3,500, and 35,000. Oh! So the, is the salary, oh, there's more small salaries down below.
From about halfway down on page one, uh... Right after machinery, mechanical equipment, there's salaries of regular employees, secondary, that...
That's zeroed out.
It's zeroed out, but if you look at the left-hand side, uh, the numbering sequence, uh, that 0410 in the middle of that?
Yep.
That is a holding account number that secondary roads uses. That through, about midway through page... Two?
Okay.
A third of the way down at least. Those are expenses, employee-related expenses, but aren't easy to assign to a single DOT, uh, actually an operation being done, so we capture that cost in those one-page items, so to speak. That total, which is like 1,441,800, if I did the math correctly, uh, yesterday, all gets put back in the budget. Your numbers, as you're looking at them today, that amount is in there twice. So it's misleading a little bit, but, um, the half hour of overtime, the health insurance overtime, paid holidays, vacation, I put all in this holding account, and then I distribute it at the end of the fiscal year based on what all areas the guys have done throughout the year. If they've worked on the bridges for 2% of the yearly time, then 2% of that money goes to, assigned towards big, bridge construction. If they were doing blading roads for 30% of their time, then 30% of that money goes to that, and as you continue on the rest of the sheets, wherever there's salaries of regular, salaries of regular employees, or R E G E M P, where you see second, or however much of that is primarily the entire hourly workforce, where you see maintenance started as the maintenance superintendent, which has been separated out, and where you see shop has been the shop foreman separated outs. But there's a, in the same location on the sequence of numbers on the first column, that 0410 that I just told you about, afterwards you'll start seeing a 100 series, a 200 series, a 400 series, a 500 series. Those all match up to a DOT three-digit code that is different types of activities that we do as secondary routes. The 100 series is administration costs, the 200 series is engineering costs, and then 420s and 430s are bridges and culverts, 450s, 460s, and 480s are roadway, uh, surfacing activities, 490 is road clearing, 520s is snow and ice, um, and then we get into 600s, which are materials, equipment operation, supplies, materials, and then 800s has to do with grounds and buildings. Which was a really quick overpass, but...
How about the 900s? That's on the first page.
The 900s are part of that holding account that I was talking about?
Holding account.
And so they, um, because you, because we do so many different things, it's, it's easier to just capture that into a holding fund, so to speak, and then incorporate it all into your budget. I always do it at the end of the fiscal year. It could be done more incrementally, but that way it's just at the, last week in June, I go through and figure the percentage on every one of those DOT codes and take that percentage times that amount in the clearing account, so whatever money has been contributed to FICA gets split up accordingly. Tyler, uh, our software package has a, has that built into that. You just go through a process to, to distribute that.
Until you're done, but it...
Mm-hmm.
What's the, I'm on page three?
Okay.
710, 241. Engineering services. C O N S.
Consultant hired services.
Okay.
Which we, I have done a significant expense on with Ben's absence. Um, still have a need, I have, still have a need for that, but, uh, having an assistant back on staff, I will be able to do more in-house than we have before.
That's not downline?
That one I almost forgot.
You don't figure in on these, uh, bridges from the DOT? That's not in your budget, right?
Um...
You like, aren't you supposed to be doing the box culverts north of New Hall that's coming here?
If the project is going to use the farm-to-market account administered by the DOT, that'll be part of that DOT budget and program that I'll present to you here before the 15th of April, and I haven't put all together, that would be in there. Now, like the bridge that we just temporarily closed for later this month, if the, those bridge projects, uh, what the feds call off system, which should be on a non-federal aid route, which most of our farm-to-market roads are, um, then those projects need to be funded locally. We get reimbursed for the expense of that project, but you've got to run it through the local budget and fund it that way.
Okay, then the, the road going into Blairstown, then, I seen you've got a big, uh, number for buying some of the property?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you got the road also figured in that after it's done?
Um...
Or how does that work?
From a roadway surface standpoint, any, I would plan on doing asphalt or any, I should just say paving. Asphalt would probably be my first choice on that road, but it might be reviewed. Would use farm-to-market funds and would be using that other fund. Uh, looking at right-of-way and shoulder widening as being possibly, well, right-of-way would be some of the dirt work, be being maybe locally funded portion of it, but the paving, resurfacing of that existing road would be utilizing farm-to-market funds, and the DOT administers those funds. The county still approves those projects, and I will bring forth a DOT budget that will mirror some of this. Um, for Bruce and Ron's ca, uh, information, the DOT will look at, from a budgeting standpoint, the net difference. Um, I'll use the motor grader, for instance, that we agreed to purchase last week. Um, if you were to trade that vehicle in, trade the replacement in, and if you got $40,000, the net cost is all that I report to the DOT. But for the county's budget, I'm gonna need to show the actual, uh, the entire amount. I mean, they, they show up on the revenue side, but from a DOT reporting standpoint, all I gotta show is the net difference. So the county budget's gonna control even that DOT budget that's required to be submitted, but the DOT is just asking for net costs. So sometimes when you look at some of the items, um, the dollars amounts will be different between the two budgets, because I'm just submitting the net to the DOT. If I'm getting reimbursed for something, you know, the, then I'm only showing the net to the DOTs.
So far, yours is the most intricate budget I've seen. Oh, boy, man, old man. I thought he's, he's got this all divided out, and there's a reason for it, but I don't know what it is.
Well, like I said, that, well, I could...
Different functions, different act...
The DOT, yeah, the DOT's three-digit code plays into part of this line, and then anyone that has researched the state's accounting system has, and I learned that when we were putting the Tyler system together on the object codes, uh, whether it's a commodity, so to speak, that you're purchasing, is it a service that is being done, um, and is it outside source, or is it county employees doing that, and so, certain items might have, from a DOT standpoint, might have six or eight different Iowa accounting codes aspect, and so, yeah, the lines... Get a little bit, almost too much intricate at times.
I knew there was a reason for it, but I just thought, well, he's got it all divided out for the things.
They enter their payroll for their employees daily because of those codes.
Oh.
And then up to, the first one he's got done, the, uh... County engineer, secondary roads, the second one, three sheets.
I will tell you, let me back up before we jump to revenues, cause I think that's what you're doing, right?
Yeah.
On, uh, Benton County's, or the secondary roads employees, the bargain unit employees, which would be everybody in secondary roads except myself, Ben Verling, Deb Cummings is the office manager, Doug Kearns is the shop foreman, and Dan McKenna is the maintenance superintendent, um, are management, non-bargain unit employees. The others are all covered by a contract. We're in the middle of a three-year contract. Um, July 1st of '25, a 4% pay increase goes into effect for the secondary roads employees. Um, I had figured a 4% increase for the maintenance superintendent, the shop foreman that are in this, within this budget, uh, 4% increase... foreman that are in this, within this budget, a four percent increase for Ben Verling and myself. For Deb Cummings, I have submitted a five thousand dollar increase for her salary. Just to capture that and how I submitted things, where all of the salary items are within my budget, I increased everything four percent. For non-union, and I have submitted to you a similar four percent increase for, well, four percent for the union and a similar four percent for non-union, with the exception of Deb Cummings, which would be more like a ten percent increase, a little bit more. But she's currently at forty-six and change, increasing that to fifty-one and change. I know the sheriff's office recently hired an office manager, I think it was at sixty-five, but fifty thousand comes as much closer to other office managers in other county offices in secondary roads. Still might be a little low, unfortunately, and my part on getting things done that way, but things have increased a lot, even in the last couple of years. I've usually started new employees out on that at a reasonable but lower scale, but like to increase that if we could at a more advanced rate than what the others might be. And looking at that, I would like to recommend and kind of pull that individual out, depending on whether you're doing a, across the board, with non-union employees on pay raises. I know the county board has made a recommendation, and that number looks to be somewhat different for each of the elected officials. So I have no idea what you're proposing to do with your appointed department heads and other non-union staff. I just want to interrupt you real quick, Tracy, to point that out. It's what I've submitted. You were gonna jump to revenue if there weren't any other questions on the expenditure pages.
You said five thousand for Ben.
Correct. You had asked Ron what the SR M A T, M C seventy meant. SR stands for secondary roads, M A T L is materials, M C seventy is the product Benton County uses for dust control, and that would be the reimbursement we get from rural residents to reimburse secondary roads for applying that material in the spring.
What's an M C seventy?
Somebody, I mean, somebody has the area in front of their home or whatever, has it done. Who, if you lose respect, some of those things have now gotten to be just completely tore up and rotten. Is it the owner?
The homeowner's responsibility to, to fill those. Like I say, come springtime, we'll blade through most of them. The Benton County, the secondary roads does try to keep a pile of, what, the industry calls a cold mix, and those that have purchased dust control from Benton County that has that M C seventy, which is a bituminous type, looks similar to a seal coat. It's somewhat similar to what seal coating is, but it just, putting it on at the rate we do and the way rock roads perform throughout the year, there, it's really intended to last annually. Sometimes you've got some roads that it does hold up better, and we have allowed those to keep them into a second, for a second season, but normally they don't last well in that second season. And some heavy traffic roads barely last one season.
A lot of them, I have to take my coffee cup out of the holder, give it splatters all over. But so that's, it's the landowner that's in charge of that, that's your thing.
It's a permit that everybody signs, and that's their responsibility to keep that up, and if.
That'll be coming in April?
Okay.
So a trip permit?
Yes.
Coming back in, what are those?
Any truck driver that's wanting to transport a load greater than the eighty thousand legal load, or at least right now with the harvest proclamation that keeps continuing, ninety thousand dollars with allowed on grain and a few other things, if you're exceeding that, you would need to get a permit from our office, asking, requesting, and giving us the weight information and the routes. We review that, approve that. There is a fee that goes with that permit, and we apply that to that line item, and.
Excavators, bulldozers, tile machines, like in my area.
A lot of times it's construction ag equipment, but sometimes you've got, oh, the homes that have modular homes would be another thing, because they're, they're, some of them aren't necessarily weight, but their width or height. But all of those loads that exceed a legal allowed across the highway would need to get a special permit, and they come back to us, the fee collected in that trip permit line.
My next one that I, I tried, I couldn't come up with time twenty-one fund. I have no idea.
Road use tax fund, which is your tax on your fuel, as well as new vehicles, things like that. When the state needed some additional money, I forget how long ago it's been, but some of that road use tax money is time twenty-one money, and it's distributed percentage-wise differently to the state, the city, and the counties. It, um, the, the state got a greater amount initially in each fiscal year of time twenty-one money, but once they reached the cap that they were looking for, then cities and counties start receiving more of that time twenty-one money. But it's, it's basically an extension of the road use tax fund that is specifically earmarked as time twenty-one, because the percentages as to how it's distributed is different. Pages two and three, I think, are pretty much just recap summaries of the total on page one, with the way Tyler prints their reports.
Evidently, you're not gonna do as many bridges this coming year.
It's all, uh, I tend to request, depending on how our fund balance is, a lot of times I don't end up asking for the reimbursed cost of a project until I get done. I can certainly do it routinely throughout the project, and there were, as well as some federal guidelines that they don't like to see too length of a span go before you ask for a request, that we, I've got, I think, six bridges in the budget to do, but I'm not sure if they'll get done and whether I'd be asking for reimbursements as much as we have in the current fiscal year. So I, I don't know if I'm saying that necessarily we're doing less bridges, but I'm just thinking the reimbursement timeframe is just a little bit off, a little bit, and not going to be anticipated to be quite as much received in fiscal year twenty-six, but not really doing less projects.
When do you come in with your project plan for the year, that March?
It has to be submitted to the DOT by the fifteenth of April. So it's usually somewhere, but like mid to late March, or first week of April, depending on how quickly I get it all put together. Depending on how your schedules all look, I know it, if I know that, I would just soon schedule that on a day that all three were gonna be there instead of when somebody might be gone.
I have no more questions, Lawrence. We did a good job.
Okay.
I did well, thank you.
I have to, if you need it, if you need it, freshman, just may I, Grace has stuff. Coffee or anything, Grace's open house has.
Grace's got an open house, if you need coffee or anything.
Or snacks.
So this stuff's supposed to hit at six o'clock tomorrow morning?
I guess. Well, Dean's sent out a, do you get Dean's emails from the emergency management?
You know, I may have, I don't know.
He sent out, he sends out like a little weather packet.
Oh, okay. We're not gonna get any, it's gonna mess us.
You think?
No. I just wanted to bet community to cancel school yet, we were.
I've heard six to ten inches is what I've heard.
Most of my syllable friends are gonna be mad because they're leaving for Mexico, and now we're gonna get snow.
Oh. Right now, they're saying six to ten?
Yeah, that's what the last one said.
Well, I haven't gotten an email in, from Ben, that's, yeah. Last time we had one of those, I was already on my route.
You were?
And I just getting ready to pick up the first kid, and they said. So hopefully they're a little earlier this time.
I think Benton was a little slow at calling it, too.
Something like this, another piece of deal.
The night before.
Yeah, take a chance on my parents, gonna arrange daycare, whatever they gotta do, and get that done.
But the one thing.
Supposed to be all over, actually, in one day.
We, I don't remember if we've ever closed a courthouse for sure, which is kind of in our discretion. It might be poor, but then they have, like, with me having voting going on, if somebody were to come in and wanna vote, it'd be special. Did you guys bring printout?
What's new in IT? Every day something.
Every day, there's something new.
So that was a hack one that I got, huh?
Mm-hmm. No.
He sort of knows.
Yours wasn't related to the other issue, though. Yours isn't related to the other issue that I think, I know, well, I guess I could be, I could be wrong with it, but.
I've been extra cautious lately. I mean, just, there's just so many soliciting things. Thanks, Ron.
All right, now. Now, do you have, before I get into this, the IT that you're presenting today is for the county and the sheriff's department, one lump sum?
Yep.
Do you want to have a roll cup between them?
No, what I did is I took their, there's some line items, they have three line items over there.
Okay.
That I basically took and replicated into mine.
Okay.
And since I didn't, I mean, I did look over some of the stuff, but I don't really know for sure what a full year of, just us doing the stuff over there, so I just verbatim copied what was in there. And I mean, it might be more than what I need, but I'm just having that in there that way in case we have.
And your passes or budget, um, what's they have figured with their whole IT guy, are they at least pretty close on what they budgeted, what they used?
Mm-hmm. So I mean, it might be, it might go down, it'll go down or go up, I don't know for sure. It's kind of an unknown where we're at. I mean, I know well enough with the stuff there, but it's, who knows what's gonna crop up.
What is the information technology, that was?
Um, the one, are you looking on the very first page with the GIS budget? Uh, that one would be all of like their, like the Beacon support, the Beacon website, any of the stuff that Schneider does for us with GIS data or anything like that. That does like the, what we have all, I mean, they also have, we have hours with them where they do some workforce, but we have some GIS stuff that we need help with, they'll come help with it. Um, that, I think that's all their support. I know there's, it went up a little bit, because they trying to change their pricing structure and stuff, and they're working on implementing a bunch of changes with how, some of the functionality within Beacon add a lot more web-based features rather than where we have some features right now. Like I know one particular thing that we have is something that always works on Larry's computer right now, and it's basically, we're gonna, when we replace the computer, it's not gonna work. So what it is, is they want us to migrate to this other solution, and that will make it available for everyone, and where we can even have it where it's provided to people in the public as well. And I think there's some, like, I know that, I added that training line item in there. That was part of their, quote, with the changes that they were planning to make and implement. There was a training that was provided with it, so that's why I threw that one in there, too.
What is the planning and management, Ben?
That one, that line item typically, from what I've, what I know what we use it for, it's for the, the flight stuff, the imagery flight.
Oh, okay.
Where we've gotta pay a certain amount. I think that gets split between, what, nine and one.
It's split within the assessor GIS and engineer and, you know, we did that six year the last time.
Yep.
And then some of that Schneider stuff, if those mapping, you know, like we did for the EMS?
Right.
Some of the contract hours, we can give them our, like, the census data, and they'll overlap all that stuff for us.
Like I had to make actually a new map for dispatch for their, the fire, because they had one that was hand-drawn in there, and I made them, had them get a nice one that's a little bit bigger and easier to see.
I think they're still drawing the splits for the assessor.
Yep, they're doing all the splits for the assessor.
So like, when a new parcel comes in or subdivision, they, they draw it all in for us on the area?
Okay. That's gonna be constant, with all the changes and somebody selling the property in.
Mm-hmm.
So unlike Myron's budget, you're not required to split out your time encoded as, that would come up as Department fourteen instead of Department fifty-two? Good for you.
I do pay two thousand in his salary out of elections.
Okay, yeah, you said that.
We usually do it in a lump sum amount, usually around a minimum.
Okay. Okay. You're gonna have to separate out each department one.
Yeah, it'd be, not really fun, I'd put it that way.
Well, if you think about the Tyler technology software, recorder, treasurer, auditor, assessor, we all utilize, so it'd be hard for us to have all of our little add-ons, so we just paid more out of one budget.
So I think for a while there, we had, like, even on the telephone and that stuff, we had every individual department getting billed for that at one point in time, and then with no, just collectively just go down to one budget line item that way, it's just you, you're gonna find everything and.
Same with our printers, we used to all have our own little printers, and now it's just all through one contractor.
Printers owned or they all?
They're all leased.
All leased, okay, so there's a man that's agreed with the followers too?
Mm-hmm. Ten, if one of them dies or whatever, they'll come replace it. Clean it, whatever, and we can call them every day of the week if we wanted to, to come in and clean them, I mean, they probably get upset with us, but.
And some of them, you know, they keep track of whether it's color copies versus black and white for charging.
Oh, I see. Do you think your IT services is high enough?
Which one, uh, GIS or the, oh wait, hold on, IT services?
Area fifty, uh, Department fifty-two.
Okay. Let me see here.
Four twenty-one?
Yeah, is it four twenty, yeah.
Yes.
Let me go to my, I got a spreadsheet with all the work in it. I think that should be good there, I know there's, uh, one amount in there, a hundred thousand, one hundred and eleven, or, one hundred and eleven thousand of it is for, uh, the Tyler maintenance stuff that comes out of lost.
Okay.
The biggest chunk of it is the, uh, three sixty-five, Microsoft three sixty-five stuff. Which, I'm working out that's part of what's in here with that, we're migrating the, uh, eventually we'll be migrating the sheriff's email into the same, uh, tenant that we, that we're under for the county, to make things simplified on management and.
And I missed part of that. So you've worked with, with these, with the sheriff's office, and you're migrating all theirs into yours?
Mm-hmm, that's why a lot of the numbers are a lot bigger than what they were in past year, so.
So you said that does include that amount from lost?
Yeah, it should be in there, I mean, it's in there, on my, on my sheet, what's that?
On my lost, out of lost, not out of your five one one, right? I put that amount under.
Oh, well typically, okay, well, I know in past years you've had me put it in there for the spending authority?
Yeah, and I used to transfer it from lost into that, but I think.
So I thought I had the numbers in there for spending authority.
Yeah, I'm sure we can pay directly out of lost instead of doing that transfer, but you and I can talk.
Okay, we can tweak that, how we need to.
I just wanna make sure we're not putting it in double.
See, I think that's the biggest cost of it, is the three sixty-five, I mean, yeah, I mean, I know most people think it just includes email, there's also other services that we have with it, I mean, like Melinda's, um, what do you wanna call it, the online check-in system for driver's license, that's part of the three sixty-five, I mean, we use a lot of the OneDrive to share files out of, there's other features that are within it, Teams, meetings, and all sorts of stuff that's included with that cost. The copy of Office for everybody on their machines is included out of that, which nice thing about that is we don't have to purchase it every year, I mean, it's included with the bulk costs, and it's always upgrading, we're not having to shell out money every five to six years to, to keep upgrading from, you know, twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen and so on. That kind of helps out a lot with us in the IT department where we don't have to go around, oh crap, we gotta go around and.
Each.
Each computer and wipe the old one out and do the new one, it's always just constantly on the same updating version. And the nice thing about it is you actually get, like, multiple licenses with it too, so, like, Haley, for example, she's got two computers, so I don't actually have to buy two licenses because her account is allowed to have five installs of Office on it. So there's weighing the benefits there too, and you can also even sign into it at home if you were wanting to use Office at home.
Like this laptop versus my desktop?
Mm-hmm.
How, uh, how old are the computers in the sheriff's office?
I had a, there's quite a few of them that are old over there. Let me find that. I think that was included in my budgeting stuff. Let me count.
Well, I think back, it doesn't seem like that long ago, but it is, a lot of that stuff's pushing ten years, six to eight years old.
Said I had about ten of them selected to be replaced.
Ten of them?
Yeah. And I don't think I was including, yeah, I didn't include any of the laptops that were with their car stuff.
Totally different, by the way.
What's that?
That, that, the laptops are gonna be totally different if they go with this other company deal.
So I just had all the desktops that were in there, and then eliminated the.
I was thinking about how old they were. So the only new stuff should be, probably dispatch.
Uh, yeah, so like the control machines, the camera PCs, some other heart monitor, heart monitor one.
That stuff's new.
I think, uh, six ones computers new, um.
Hmm, I'd say nobody else's is.
Yeah, yeah, there was a lot of them in the front office that were due for replacement, there's one.
Still have your original, Josh?
Yeah, John's old one.
So it's, it's in that?
That's one that's due for replacement.
But you got that figured in?
Yeah, I've got that all figured in.
I'm not back in the jail.
There was the, uh, I know there's the master control one that I determined, there was some other, like, there's some that might not be in this list, but I know that they need to be replaced, I know there's like, there's at least two or three of them that I have found that are ones that I know need to be replaced, and they weren't actually like on the domain, they're, they do other functions, like the ones that they click to open the doors in the jail, and like the key card one.
That's really old.
Mm-hmm.
How does that, your budget feel on hire?
Oh.
I'm pleased at least for.
Okay, I spent like all day, I worked at home on Friday and spent the entire day in front of the budget trying to figure out what I thought, what I needed, and went through and looked at all the stuff of the sheriff and.
It's kinda like throwing a dart, near the dart. Bringing the sheriff's office in, just.
This does have the new time and attendance stuff too.
It just doesn't seem like there's enough there.
I just wanna make sure we don't forget something.
Is that what you're thinking, Tracy?
What's that?
Bringing sheriff's office in with him, it just doesn't seem like there's enough funding there.
That's what I thought, but.
Yeah, if we, if him and I find something that we're missing, I'll let you know, I just wanna make sure we got everything covered.
Mm-hmm.
I don't really get, I thought it was gonna be a heart.
And you've got the.
You're gonna do it, right?
Uh, 'cause I know they've got numerous, what do you wanna say, service agreement type things that come in.
So I looked at some of those that were on there, were recurring, like the three sixty-five, I know that one is one of the big ones, but that was where I was gonna, we're gonna migrate it over to the other stuff, and there might be some overlap in there where we have to pay for both, because you gotta keep one running in order to migrate to the other, because if you don't shut one down, you're gonna lose everything, so.
You've got like the, uh, Tac-ten's in there?
Saying some of that stuff came out of different line items, I gave Dave a spreadsheet of the ones that I.
All over. Nine one one pays for a piece of it?
Say, there were certain ones that I thought were more geared towards like the IT type stuff rather than the full overall like Tac-ten and things that I really wouldn't typically be paying for, more like nine one one admin type stuff, so I didn't take those out. But there was like three line items that I sent Dave, or Dave and I said, here's the ones that I took, and I just scratched a lot of them.
Like eighty-five thousand, something like that.
And then you've got enough left in years to cover these other deals?
Yeah, we'll explain all that to you.
Ten, there's some other ones, like I was looking at some of the telecommunications service ones, and like, we could work with trying to get some of those cut down a lot more, and there's things we can work on over the year to make changes too.
Give yourself two.
Well, two, that'll work, 'cause I know there's stuff with like USA communications on, like how the phone stuff is set up, and I know we're utilizing it one way, and I don't know if we can switch to a different way, which would be cheaper and not have the long distance call, I don't know for sure, it's, we gotta work with them, RECOM and all that to see if we can do all that stuff. But yeah, I was seeing invoices and I'm like, well, this is something we could work on, changing and tweaking and.
Excellent. So we need to stay progressive on that. Now Haley, we should be good for a year at least for the victorial.
Big time at the end.
Yeah, right?
We're on our second of the second year.
I think so.
I know with that contract, but I think we're on the second portion of it, so it was the six years, 'cause when they did that, while we're flying. 'Cause we just got the new flight like last year, so I think we have one more year after this, and then I don't know what the thoughts are if we do another flight or not.
Larry, uh, Larry?
Usually it instigates that.
'Cause I think that meeting's next week.
So yeah, you can ask him if, the thoughts on that.
Yes, next Tuesday, gentlemen, if you did not know, you have another meeting. It's not up here. Oh, that's, uh.
I don't send those out, that comes from Larry.
Assessor. I'll get a letter in the mail. Came out from Jordan. You should get a letter in the mail, but I don't know why you did that. Six thirty.
Six thirty Tuesday night?
Yeah. From the agent.
Jordan needs to send us out a email on it.
Yeah.
From here?
And no, it'll be a court out, second floor.
Because the issue's in the magistrate room, doesn't it?
Yes. Okay. Well, I have no more questions, Dan.
Okay.
That's, I think you come up with some sort of a budget like that with all the new stuff you're throwing out, it's good to know that.
Yeah, it was kind of tough, that's why I sat at home on Friday in peace and quiet, didn't have anybody interrupt me to work on it.
I know that feeling. And you said that tech team is coming when, for them?
What's that?
When is that tech team coming?
It will be, I think it's next week, on Monday Tuesday.
Because, will they possibly might swing by our board meeting too, right, and give them an update?
What's that?
Will they come in here and give them an update?
Yeah, they, they will.
Okay.
Tech team checking the sheriff's office?
Mm-hmm. And so at least it's in time if they find something maybe that we don't know about.
Good. Ready?
Yep. It's the twenty-fourth, that's what they're doing.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was next week.
Please make noise, maybe.
These are, I think, vehicle, they kicked it off after, they want some miles. And you probably don't have our, sorry.
They don't have ours.
They don't have mine.
No, they don't have any one, that's for sure.
That's the new one?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I did.
We have those?
Cool. Everything I asked for. I see some of the dodges we missed yesterday when I was sitting outside.
They're getting striped. We got, yeah, we got them all striped already, I think. Yep. One last thing to do on the back end.
What is this one that we have?
Yes, the one I gave you is, are updated, there were some things we changed this, this morning, so yeah, you have an old copy, I believe.
Well, just let the budget go to the last thing.
Okay.
The other things that you got here.
Okay.
Your vehicle bid.
I have that right here.
Okay, good.
Here's, we received one bid, same TICE, uh, came out to three vehicles at forty-four, five, sixty-four each, which I believe is the same price. Forty-four, five, sixty-four, for a total of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. Yep, same, same as the first three. Can you pass this around or you? It's the only one received, which is same as last time.
Same then, I mean, same double letter, simple?
Just change the letterhead, but everything is the same.
Do they happen to say how long they're out?
Um, they'll be here probably in the next few weeks.
Really?
Yeah.
Good turnaround.
Very good turnaround.
And then a warranty on them, I didn't get into that, somewhere sixty thousand?
I think the drive train's a hundred, I believe in that kind of standard. But I think they're, I don't know exactly what the bumper to bumper is.
I didn't know since they're classified as a.
Fleet vehicle or?
Yeah, you know what I mean?
I did talk to Tyler at one point, he did say they were offering like a hundred thousand mile warranties, bumper to bumper, I guess I can get with him and ask him.
Seems like I bought it on a G.
Is that what it was? But he mentioned something about where they hadn't done it in the past, where they would not do this for like, because of how we're using them, but I think he said they were gonna change that somehow to get a reasonable, I don't think it's standard, I think it's something we can look at, but if we continue to have the luck we're having with the vehicles, I mean, I drove one to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, I had a water pump and a radiator, I mean, they've just been phenomenal.
Well, most of the time you're gonna have trouble, it's gonna be over a hundred thousand anyway, so warranty ain't gonna do you.
'Cause I mean, you figure a hundred and thirty-five thousand on the, on the dash, you can add another hundred thousand for idle time. You know, I mean, they run eight hours a day, especially in the winter, you know, if you shut off, then you got all the gear running, and then you got a dead battery.
So this is the, the next go-around, the Tahoe heads out the door?
Yep, so, where are we at? Yep, the six seventeen, um, the Damien.
Damien's blew up.
Damien, the Damien Fairbanks Durango, which.
He's six, he's six eleven now.
Yes. Yes, but he is not, he's driving a Ram now, an extra Ram of one of the extras we had. So.
What's your, your last one to go?
And I think we're going to replace the, where'd it go? Brant's driving it. My old vehicle, the six-ten vehicle, that's got a hundred and thirty-six and change. That's gonna have, you could probably add another fifteen thousand to that, probably. Well, maybe not fifteen, I guess.
But he's had it a while already.
That was my old vehicle.
So about three thousand a month?
Probably. So I mean, it's getting up there already.
And probably keep that one, decommission it for a school car?
We were gonna, yeah, something like that. And then, um, yeah, school car or something. It's probably not gonna go back as a reserve. We have an, we have a plan for our, for the next bunch, for a reserve car and, and whatnot. So yeah, Baumann's, um, where'd they go? Baumann's, the six-ten vehicle?
Damian.
And Damian. So those three.
Six-ten, is that the Durango? That's the one that blowed?
No, that's the one with the V-eight. That's been a great vehicle, but it's got a hundred and thirty-six and change.
Okay, which one blowed?
Well, I don't know. Yeah, but that's not, that doesn't reflect. He, they get.
I think he took it off.
I think Dennis took it off, maybe.
This is this one? No, that ain't it. The six-twenty-two looks like the one I was driving. One of the others cut. How mine have a hundred and forty-five?
Here's one for one, here's one at one thirty-eight. That's one we just tore down.
May have taken it off.
He may have taken off because it's not torn down yet, but it needs torn down because we need the equipment.
You guys get that done. I'll take that. Just make sure we have insurance.
Yep. I've been, and I've been working with Nancy, um, because there were some vehicles that we were still paying on, so I got that cleaned up as much as I could as of right now.
Yeah, I see there's, he's only got two seventeens listed on there, so one of them's been taken off.
Which I don't think he added, which he was supposed to, we talked to him about that this morning. He was supposed to put that back on here, but he didn't. But there's one more Durango with a hundred and forty, it's a V-six, it's a seventeen, I believe also. It's some, it's some three you bought that year.
The Durango, the fourth from the bottom, that's decommissioned already.
The hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Yeah.
You go up two lines to that black Chevy, that's decommissioned, that's done.
It's actually blue. That was.
And then the other one, Damian's, that the engine blew up, is not even on this list.
And there's also a school Durango on here that's got a hundred and forty-five on it.
That's the other V-six.
That's another V-six. Maybe you bought four that year?
I can tell you're kidding me with that.
You must have bought four because there's that school one, which was Kyle's old one, I believe. But yeah, we are missing one older Durango that is still fully equipped, but that's the one that the motor just blew out.
Are you coming on the interviews?
Interviews are all done. Civil Service made a top ten list for us and we have yet to give conditional offers out yet, but I did reach out to all the people that made the list to let them know they'll probably hear something this week.
And that, out of them ten, I'd hire in young. So we got some really good applicants. It's been amazing. We had like thirty-two.
Yeah, we started with thirty-one, now we're down to ten.
So that was good, really good, yeah.
Do you think that our, uh, wage adjustment helped in the last year?
To get us through?
No, in the contract, we did a big wage adjustment, I would guess.
Oh, we figured that.
It brought our range. Do you think that helped in people applying?
I think so. We had a pretty good marketing. We were putting a lot of stuff out there. If you know, if you've seen on the internet, we did a lot of, we made two or three different videos. Um, so, yeah, it was the best, best pool candidates we've had in.
Long time.
Very long time.
So out of the vehicles you got listed right here.
Mm-hmm.
I knocked the three that you said out, the seven, Durango, the black Chevy or blue Chevy pickup, which.
Yep.
Nothing. And then the Tahoe, of course, Scott's driving it because I've just seen it here a couple of weeks.
Yeah, he's still driving it.
That needs to go, yeah.
So what I'm getting at is that you got three of them that you're getting ready to put on the road now.
For new people, correct?
Well, I'm gonna say the three you got now that are set in your lot.
Mm-hmm.
One of them Scott's gonna get, right?
No. Scott's gonna get one of those next three that we just got bids on. We figured, he still has a vehicle, so we figured it'd be best to get the three vehicles for the new hires because Scott can keep driving what he's driving for the next month or two. But soon as the, the other three come in, we're gonna do the same thing, get bids and get them built just as soon as possible. Because I just, I, I felt it didn't make much sense to take a vehicle out of service.
If we take Scott's vehicle out of service, then the new hire will have nothing. We can't take that Tahoe and give it to the new hire. That wouldn't make any sense.
But Scott is definitely, we're definitely replacing it. It's just.
This'll be one of these three coming.
Yeah. What's that?
This'll be one of these three coming.
Correct.
Scott, Tyler and Damian will be one of the three coming.
Correct.
Unless Damian keeps the pickup. How would we do that?
Right. Which his pickup, I mean, if, and you look at these pickups, some of these pickups are getting up there too already. I don't know how that happened, but getting close to a hundred already on a couple of them.
And we're tough leaning on, we're gonna get this out of Haley, out of the.
I have been in there a hundred and forty thousand out of ARBA. Or not ARBA, lost, sorry. Yes. And that was that in the last minutes. There was any authority.
That's right. So can I get a motion from all you guys, or the Durangos?
I would move to get these three Durangos ordered. And this is, you've got three here now, and this is an additional three.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Corporal. Seaman eye.
Tippet eye.
Bullseye eye. There you go.
These are twenty-six ones, right?
These are twenty. Twenty-five. They're twenty-fives. I'm almost positive.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, they definitely won't be making twenty-sixes yet. Yeah.
The vehicle that, the Ram that Damian's driving, is that twenty-five thousand, is that what's on it or is that a mis?
Nope, that's what's on it.
He's, since his vehicle blew up, he's temporarily driving that one.
Oh, okay.
Because if you look, there's like three Rams that are fairly new. They got fairly low miles. Um, one at twenty-five, one at thirty-two. Um, I thought there was, maybe we only, did we get two or how many we get that year?
Should have had four and then.
I don't see another low mileage one.
Kyle's has got thirty-four.
Okay, there's the other one. Yep, that's it. Yeah, because Kyle just got his. So yeah.
Okay, that's a twenty, twenty-four miles.
Yep. So those have pretty low miles, thirty-four, twenty-five, thirty-two.
All right. The next thing you got is somebody that's resigning.
Yes. Haley, you have that?
What?
Our resignation.
Um. Well, I didn't get an actual letter, letter, other than, did you want me to, they got that copy though, didn't you?
Did he reside by a letter?
Yes.
Yeah. So Friday, yeah, he resigned on Friday and then we took it up. I took it, you were off working for, and then I took it.
She sent it to me by email. Sorry about that.
Okay. No worries.
Please know the feeling, right?
Could be higher.
As of, effective February twelve?
Sounds right. Is that Friday?
Twenty-five, Justin Kachel is resigning.
February twelfth is tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
Can you turn this in, Lynn?
Last day of work, probably February seventh. Sorry about that. Everything will be turned in by the.
Yeah, which I believe is completed, correct?
Almost.
Yeah, we just acknowledge his resignation effective February seventh.
And we can get you a copy of that if you want it.
I can send him this.
That's public information.
Okay, I saw it.
Okay, so it's an action item, so can I get a acknowledgement?
I'll acknowledge the resignation of Justin Kachel.
Second. Okay, what honor. Seaman eye.
Tippet eye.
Bullseye eye. Just give me one second.
All right, so we're on this one.
Yeah.
That's the number one.
Yep, yep.
And I can bring you the revenues. I didn't get that done.
Fuel, the fuel looks good.
We kicked that around. Um.
That's always a tough one.
We left the patrol where it's at, just by current numbers, and then we added a little, if you look down to the admin fuel.
I saw that.
Because we were gonna, we're gonna take Kyle out of that, myself and Josh, and also our liaison. We kinda, we discussed that and we kinda put her in, or put whoever that person will be.
In the ten-sixties.
Man, I have, yeah, I saw that. I had no idea what kind of my vehicle was.
Which one?
The, the one that the liaison, right?
But I think we're gonna lose that vehicle because that's not ours.
That one's Foundation Two's.
I think we bought that with some money from the region.
Foundation Two bought it for a dollar.
Yep. So we're not, and that's, so that was the question I had a week or so ago about we needed a liaison vehicle, but you mentioned Ron that you think there's a couple here.
We may, we may be getting those back.
Which.
But they don't know yet. We won't know that till, geez. We don't know when.
So, yeah, so that still leaves us with a vehicle for that person. Hopefully that works out.
So Tracy, on those, the three vehicles in our possession, those are the Raycom quotes. I gave GTAC the same Raycom quote and just told them to mirror it for the next three. Yep. Well, pricing is very similar.
The only, the only way I would decide one from the other is how fast you get it done. That would be the only thing, you know. You got Urbandale and then of course you have one in Cedar Rapids.
Which that's kind of our, that's not the most convenient thing is to run a vehicle to Urbandale.
Are we being switched to Marshalltown?
No.
Not on that.
Cedar Rapids, Ben.
Other stuff we're being switched to Marshalltown.
Yeah, Ben Ingles heading up the.
Yeah, this deal here has nothing to do with what we're doing. Totally different.
You guys were, side note, they were busy yesterday doing budget stuff. Our, what are we calling, consultant was in yesterday and we did a walk through of the tower sites and everything. And one of them is the equipment room at the sheriff's office. And those people do nice work. Uh, John Freel was gonna start working on cabling in there. And I don't know if that's something we wanna talk to them about. That, most of that is, it's following computer stuff.
You, so you're saying like upgrading?
Yeah. That Freel had a plan. But I don't know what, a hundred percent what, what all it was. Some of them was switching, switching cables from a large size to a small size. Did you help Freel do that? When you switched cables in there? So the idea was when, uh, like sheriff's office phones, all the cabling would be a certain color. Right now, emergency management is.
Orange.
And then the sheriff's office phones would be green or whatever. And then you would know right away by looking at a cable of.
What it belongs to.
What it belongs to. That's something Ben can look at as time goes forward.
Well, I've got stuff planned with network equipment and real life and stuff isn't there anyway, so.
Work in progress.
I'd like to say it'd be a quick work in progress, but it might be.
That's the only question I have. How some Raycom can get them done.
What did he say yesterday?
I called yesterday, um, basically he's got like two or three vehicles ahead of us right now. And right now, I mean, we're just waiting on the equipment. There's a six, he basically said six to eight weeks. Yeah. Everything's got a, a lead time on it, so.
How about, uh, sector?
The equipment's saying about six to eight weeks to order it as far as.
Wouldn't be no difference.
Yeah.
Right. I personally think Raycom and Cedar Rapids is a lot, because I've been here quite a while and no matter who does it, you get a new squad car, you drive it for a week, you're gonna find something that just, it's gonna need to look, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
I get it, I get it. Me personally dealing with Raycom for three years now, I will comment.
Well.
Totally different, understand, I, you know.
And we've never used them bef, we've never used them before either. We've always used RC systems, so we're new, this is.
It's just hard for me that I have a bad taste in my throat that.
We get it.
Well, something we could do is have our first three at Raycom and then get our next three incoming and get them over to Urbandale and have.
Because I kinda wanna set them all up the same also, so they're kinda all uniform.
You got the same guy doing it. Your chances of getting it done that way are a lot better.
Yeah, if you have a problem like, oh, which, which guy did this one?
Which we've ran into that over the years.
I mean, same company doing it from Waukesha to Cedar Rapids. Completely different thought about how he did stuff.
I'd like to check, I, I'd still stay with Raycom, I'm gonna... Try them anyway. All right, back to your budget. You want to take back from?
I can just tell you like cer, like, one thousand, six thirty-two, that's like a new line item, that's for GTAC, our laptop program, and also home car cameras, and also...
Lexipool.
Yeah. And Lexipool's yearly, so that's what that line item's for.
It's under IT.
Yeah.
GTAC's gonna be ninety-four thousand, Lexipool, we're estimating ten thousand, we'd like to get the GL and Dispatch probably on board with that. I thought it was seven to eight thousand a year for Lexipool. So, if we add the GL and Dispatch on there.
And then there's, there's some other ones that are gonna come up on some, uh... Like the printer printing machine, there's another one that comes up.
That's a problem right now. They won't talk to us, because they don't, we don't have a, we're working on that right now.
Because they don't, they don't want you to have a service agreement.
And we don't, so they, I mean, it's not printing right, it's printing all black, you can't even see the fingerprints, and they won't talk to us, so we gotta figure out if it's, is it their machine?
No, it's ours.
Okay, I was hoping it was gonna be theirs, unlike, we'll then come get it, but...
They want, they want a service agreement, but it never works out in your favor.
Six hundred and forty-four thousand for another three vehicles then, for the twenty-five, twenty-six?
Be, yep.
Yeah.
Another three?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'd like to be on a three-vehicle rotation every year.
That one is a little tough for me, that's six in six months. That one, that one I've heard about, out in the public. People that listen to me, and so say, that's six vehicles, there are nine vehicles in six months. That one the public's not liking. And by my leech, you really won't have anything to do next year.
Well, we can talk about that, so, me personally, I don't have a vehicle. I want something that has radar in it, um, a computer, I had to give mine up, so there's one. The second one, we talked about Josh's, Josh has a marked vehicle that's fully, um, fully equipped, we have no reserve vehicle. And so we thought we could use Josh's, take, he's, he's got like, he's got a great vehicle, it's, it's a Dodge Hemi, he's got like sixty, or ninety-six thousand.
I have a full cage.
He's got a full cage.
So we were looking at maybe using that as the transport vehicle, and getting rid of that transport and power.
Because, again, we don't have a reserve, so Dennis is doing our transports, we can utilize that vehicle for transports, like you said, it's got a full cage, it's reliable, it's good in the snow, and then also, that vehicle can be a spare for our, for our reserve.
Still have one.
Less.
Right, well, and we're hoping to get maybe a couple more, yeah. So, that's...
Probably use the reserve.
Right, yep, we have, we did get two or three good applications for reserves that are currently full-time, other places. So that's, so going back to the vehicles, that's, I know it sounds like a lot, but we went years without buying anything, so we're kind of in a pickle.
See, I look at it though, that if you get it in April of May of next year, then it ain't the six months, but you're thinking in...
And I'm not saying we're gonna go get them July one.
That's a little, people may take that better.
Right.
Wait, wait till you get a bunch of miles on it.
Yeah, I get it.
I'm not, and we're not pulling anything.
You're just putting it in there, I get it.
Right.
I'm not arguing with you.
Right.
I get it, but I'm just saying...
I know it looks bad.
Where he's coming from, it looks bad.
I get it.
Six now, and then comes July first, we're gonna have a few more. No, 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 you're gonna wait till...
But again, even after July, I still don't have a vehicle, so I would like to get something sooner than later, you know?
How, how does it work out with the, let's say that you have nine vehicles in six months, and you wanna rotate them out? You're gonna have a lot of miles on three of these vehicles before they get rotated out, is that, I mean, that's...
It's not normal, we'd like to, but, and I, okay, I'll just talk freely, we got out of a rotation, so this, it all kinda come to head.
COVID-10 kills.
It, it all came to head right now, yes, I understand, we're not gonna buy nine vehicles every year, but we're in a position where we really don't have a choice right now. Yeah, we can explain to the public why, I mean, this list pretty much explains it, you know? Everything that we're pulling out has a hundred and forty up to a hundred and ninety, you know? And these pickups, again, you kick the can down the road on some of these pickups, you know, a whole year, you figure they put thirty thousand, thirty, thirty-five thousand, these pickups are gonna, you know, you got three pickups, right now, here's one with a hundred, I mean...
They should easily go to one fifty-one, sixty mark.
Which we will be there before they get replaced, you know, we're not pulling out these pickups that have ninety-six thousand, we have a, we have a, a method to our madness here, I guess, we do.
Well, there has to be.
Right, and we just, you know, so we're just not throwing, we've looked at this and looked at this.
I will count there, verify, they're doing their due diligence, digging through, and asking a lot of questions.
We are.
I'm on page two, or is it page?
Oh.
Tracy's moving on.
Okay.
Towards the bottom, you got thirty, you have sixty thousand on overtime pay, and now you're gonna cut it back to thirty-five.
Cutting it back to zero.
Hold on, he's on a different line.
Oh.
One, two, three numbers up from the bottom to the right.
It's in the GL.
It's not the GL, no, that's not the GL one, that would be...
You talking ten fifty?
Yep.
Is it GL?
Ten fifty, one oh four.
Because we're at, we got sixty thousand in there, we're at forty-seven.
Overtime shift pay. One, two, three, four, five, up from the bottom on page two.
Twenty-four, twenty-five was sixteen, we took it down to thirty-five?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, because that was overtime and shift pay in the kitchen. So, we have two, two full-time positions that are budgeted for, if you look up a little bit, um, right here, a hundred and fourteen. Here, I can't read all the way across. So that covers our two...
Full-time ladies.
Full-time ladies, and then you come down here to part, temporary and part-time cook. We didn't need forty, she's, we have one part-time cook slash custodian, she works...
Twenty hours a week.
Twenty hours a week, no overtime, so that was just...
Well, she does fill in for the full-timers.
Right, so that's...
That's what she's coming out of.
And that's, and that's why we cut that, because we kinda combined the two, that makes sense. And then if you look up one right above you, Tracy, there was one, temporary part-time wages and corrections, there was sixty thousand budgeted. We don't have any part-time people in corrections, so we got rid of that whole line period, that saved us sixty.
Is it one thirty, or we saving provisions?
Well...
We're on pace currently, right now, to hit about a hundred and twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand for the year, that's why it said a hundred and thirty.
So we figure next year, nothing, it's, it's not gonna go down.
Oh, no.
Something, that's kinda what we've been holding them at. Rusty said the average meal's up to about five bucks a meal right now.
Yeah, that's terrible.
Just cut out the eggs.
Well, we talked about that too, but he said he asked to give them eggs, because they have to have so much protein. So, trust me, we asked. Right, right.
There's the hundred and thirty thousand.
I'm on page three.
That's for any inmate that needs to go be seen.
Yep, yep.
And as you can see, we've already spent darn, and again, that's a moving target.
Yep.
It's not gonna go down, we have to make more trips to the hospital than ever before, just because of...
But it's cheaper having that other company out of Waterloo come down, we just don't pay them their bills.
Right, that's just the nursing stuff, this is if we have to ship them out, basically.
And then, and that, that three zero four, that, that covers, uh, ACH. Aren't they paid out of that line?
I'm not sure, I've not gotten a bill for them yet.
They are, they come out of there, and then...
ACH?
ACH.
Which is our nursing?
Just the letter ACH?
Yep, American Correctional Health.
Sure, I'm not sure what it's called.
And then that's the people that scrub the bills.
Yep, yep, and they've been doing that for us.
Oh, they do a fantastic job of that.
Yep.
I'd like to see the training.
That one...
That's good. It's expensive, but you gotta keep your people trained and interested.
Well, that's not for that, that was more, we did, we did put some more in there, um, I think we, that's if we had to send somebody through the academy.
No, no, this is jail.
Oh.
Every jailer goes to the three-day jail school every year, so that was taken into account.
Yeah, so, and right now, we've already spent about seven, so we had to bump that up a little bit.
That's an expensive business, but you gotta do it.
Yep.
Is it advanced correctional healthcare?
Yes.
That's what I, I did under, so like the last bill.
How much are they gonna pay? Building and ground maintenance, cut that down.
Yeah, we...
I'm trying to think of any projects you got to drive with.
Tell them it's just about it.
Yeah, I say we just...
You just gotta keep your head above water.
Most days we're doing that.
Hopefully nothing big happens, and they keep your head above water.
Yeah, and then they think, yeah, fly with it.
It's been a busy thirty days.
It only takes one shift, you know?
Forty days now.
Forty days.
From that paper, I mean, it's got the union goes four percent, but we figured with the dollar amount, we should be okay.
Yeah, if you figure the dollar, you'll be all right.
I love watching, we had a little technical difficulties, my iPad died, sorry. It's back on now.
Getting back to your, updating your vehicles, your Raycom probably be better anyway, because that's where your radios are gonna come out of anyway.
That's kinda why we got away from RC Systems.
Yeah.
So...
There was, nobody's been complaining about the radios, you know what I mean?
Oh, they're beaut, they're amazing, the best part I love about them, they work.
Must have been a big thing, yeah.
Because we hadn't had that before, well, back when it, our first...
And, and case you, they got sold again, now it's owned by an investment company.
Raycom?
Yep. That's what the problem we're having now.
Where are we at with that camera?
We think, they're right, we, we worked on that again yesterday.
I roughed them up a little bit, I called them.
It's, it's the, uh, the tower people that took it off, it wasn't, it wasn't RC Systems, they arranged them to come over every time.
It's Raycom's problem.
Uh, no.
They don't think so.
They don't think so.
It's their project. They subbed up these, they subbed out these tower, okay, then...
No, they're saying that RC Systems...
They're not making the subs, subcontractors.
That's on, that's on, that'd be like me coming to your house.
You won't get into argument with me.
That's Raycom's baby, as far as I'm concerned.
I argue with that.
And I told that guy that...
I'm doing another deal, we signed up with him right now, uh, he's working on...
Do you want to know, I can tell you that right now?
No.
Okay.
Not now, not now, probably.
All right. You just know the dollar amount, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And I got that, and I'll make up for next, thirteen, thirteen Zoom meetings.
Are we gonna have a meeting?
One and a half, if three, somebody's gonna be home.
Yes.
What, somebody's on vacation?
So are you all three there or not? So it's a, agenda posting one?
No, no.
But if two of you are there, I do.
Um, then I won't.
Yeah, but even if two of you are there, are you discussing, or still be kind of discussing our project?
I, I won't, I won't go to the Zoom meeting.
I would air on the same side if two of you are there, you know, it's your agenda.
I'll let you know two, next Tuesday, if we're gonna have it.
We, you've got another meeting, you said, where?
So, we have another meeting tomorrow.
Two more here.
And then also on the nineteenth, excuse me, eighteenth.
Right.
The assessment.
At six thirty?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And the Zoom meeting, you don't have to have anything to it. Back then, it was the sheriff, and the supervisor.
I'm gonna go to bed.
Now, it's a silverware, so we can't.
What do you think?
You'll also go to that meeting.
Which one?
The, uh, regular meeting, yeah, all you have to do is go, uh, go back to Zoom games.
BS.
Because I, I can share in the team, like my spreadsheet, it's just a way to hold their, their notes, and it all has to be in our report.
We very well got the budget stuff for today knocked out.
Yeah, I mean, when you guys wanna act on wages and stuff.
How many, how much more budget stuff we got?
Tomorrow, we'll have HR and Mona, and I think pretty much everybody's coming through, can't think of any departments I'm missing that haven't presented to you. Um, the HAC is the last one in BDG today, so I think we're on track. Do you want to do another budget work session, and...
I think we should, I think we should...
Bunch numbers, or...
I think we should do a work session and crouch some numbers.
And that would give me time to, to put all these tallies together in the state system, so we can look at service agreements, yeah.
See where we're at from last year.
So I haven't had time without getting everybody's...
That's good.
That would give me time.
All right, next week, nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first, and three, all three then. Thanks, Ben.
Yep.
We good?
You're good.
All right, thanks, everybody.
He's, uh...
That's at nine o'clock, though, but...
Thanks, Haley.
That should take time.
Is that here?
We try that, but...
No, no matter, whatever's working for you.
Well, I'll see where I get, because, and then I'll have to send dates for the maximum levy notice, that hearing that we have to have separate.
Yeah.
So I'll have to get all those dates figured out.
Okay.
I'll check my phone, see if I got any that for you, I did not have last night.
Okay, so I have them now tomorrow, our regular meeting.
Tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow at nine o'clock, that ought to be short feeding.
Should be, and that's what, if Mona can't make it in, maybe if Ron and I could at least get together and do like teams, or something, we can hash them out, or try to bring them off, I mean, you have the budgets in front of you. Blah blah.
Pretty well, everybody went three percent. Pretty well, everybody went three percent at least.
I think so, other than those that specified, I guess.
Confirmation, I know last night went three and a half.
That's for board going, and then assessor and that, that's separate, all those, so...
But basically, I want a queue to get everything added up.
I want you to, under the funds and...
My nephew.
Aww, congratulations.
Alright, congratulations.
Great nephew.
Great.
Alright, I don't know about you guys, but I'm getting hungry.
Texas?
Texas.
Oh, that's that one. Oh, little round face.
Oh, brand new. That's what one, my one granddaughter put it.
Are we gonna turn?
How long ago see a new fresh baby?
Right, say never, do you say never?
I wanna see the old baby.
Ah, I love that. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I would make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.